Okay, all right, the stream is live.
I call to order the regular meeting of the Marlington Local Board of Education on April 2nd, 2020 at 7:00 p.m. The invocation will be by Mr. Knoll.
All right, you borrow heads, please. Father have we thank you so much for this evening, Lord, and thank you for another beautiful day. I'm reminded today, Lord, of the words in Psalm 91. He is my refuge and my fortress, my God in whom I trust. Because he loves me, says the Lord, I will rescue him, I will protect him, for he acknowledges my name. So I just pray a special blessing over this community. In this time of sickness and this time of lost wages and jobs, Lord, we just call upon you. We left this meeting unto you, Lord, our decisions, our discussions, that they will be pleasing to you. We ask all these things in your name, amen.
Thank you. Will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
And to the republic. Liberty and justice for all.
The reading of the mission statement. In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public-community meeting. Tonight's meeting will be conducted as a virtual public meeting in accordance with House Bill 197 that has been approved into law. Please call the roll.
This is Gabriel.
Here.
Mr. Hagan. Mr. Hagan.
Here.
Mrs. Humphrey.
Yeah.
Dr. Mason.
Here.
Mrs. Stevens.
Here.
The adoption of the meeting agenda, are there any additions or corrections? I would just like to mention that the minutes that we will be voting on tonight are in the treasures folder rather than in the attachment to the agenda. And it has the correction noted already in those minutes on the section that's 5C2. Is there a motion to recommend that the Marlington Local Board of Education adopt the following agenda for the April 2nd, 2020 meeting? So moved. Has there been a second? I didn't hear, Katie, was there a second to that?
I think it was Stevens and then Hagan.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll. Did you call me?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hagan.
Yes.
Mrs. Humphrey.
Yes.
Dr. Mason.
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens.
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
Is there any old business? Hearing none under new business. Autism Awareness Month by Mr. Knoll.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank my administrative colleagues and board members that have joined me tonight wearing blue to support Autism Awareness Month. Also want to thank our parents that sent pictures to me today of your children as around the district that was proclaimed the Light It Up Blue Day, and I'll be posting those either tonight or tomorrow. The CDC has determined approximately one in 54 children is diagnosed with the autism spectrum disorder. Words are four times more likely to be diagnosed than girls. Autism affects all ethnic and socioeconomic groups. Early intervention is the key, and there's no medical detection for autism. Most of you know that my wife and I have a son named Andrew diagnosed with autism and Down syndrome. We have many awesome, great days. But as families in our situation understand, our reality is we deal with this disorder 24/7. Autism is no walk in the park for those that have it nor for their loved ones. Many of our children are nonverbal, flight risk, have behavior issues, and get looked at or treated unfairly. Autism is the fastest growing developmental disorder and surely deserves more than one month dedicated to educating people about its effects and ways to make autistic people's lives happier, healthier, and safer. During this time of COVID-19, not having school, remote learning, and social isolation, the battle gets even tougher. To all of our parents of students with special abilities, please know that you are not alone. My wife Jennifer and I are here to support all of you. If my son Andrew were to write a note to your child, he'd probably say something like this. Hi, my name's Andrew, I'm 16. I'm nonverbal and have Down syndrome and autism. I'm a little scared and anxious right now about COVID virus, but my mom and dad are taking good care of me. I enjoy listening to music, throwing socks at my friends, watching YouTube videos. I have a great smile and sense of humor. I enjoy going to grandma's, even though I can't go right now, taking showers and having parties. You are not alone. I'm a lot like you, and my parents are willing to stand beside your mom and dad as well. Hope to see you soon. I miss you. Love, Andrew.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend board policy to cancel public speaks? So moved.
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to know exactly why we're doing this. This can be accomplished from exactly the way we're doing it right now. Someone who signs up to do public speaks can do it via calling in. If we don't, we're not comfortable with that, we could have the written words put into the end of our minutes. I see no reason to cut the public out at this point. They're frustrated. They are antsy because they're quarantined. And they feel this would be a way at least to open up part of our meeting to them to allow the points where, you know, we hear. I'm getting more and more response from people who are frustrated because they're getting no responses to emails and other forms of communication made to them, to school board members, and they're hearing nothing back from any of them. And so this is where they feel like their voice is being heard. And we could have them, again, we could have them call in, they could be just like we're doing now. Or if we're not comfortable with that, we could have them send a written one in and post that, recognize it in the meeting that these people have signed up for public speak and add as an addendum to the minutes. That would be my suggestion.
Okay. Per Stark County Assistant Prosecutor Deborah Dawson via email on 316 in regard to the Ohio Attorney General's guidance on 313, the board can cancel public speaks during a state of emergency. And then the OSBA podcast on Learning the Way regarding the House Bill 197. The open meeting does not require that the public be given the opportunity to comment at public meetings. However, the school board will need to carefully review our current policy and make sure it's compliant with the new technology platform. Therefore, it's recommended that legal counsel be consulted regarding amending or updating the current policy that we have or suspending the current policy during the pandemic. I would make a recommendation that Mrs. Sutton reach out to Neola and consult with them about a policy that might be conducive to work with to work with the technology platform. And perhaps by the next regular meeting, we can have that part of the meeting. Is that something, Mrs. Sutton, is that something that you could do with Neola, reach out to them and see what they have available?
Thank you, Mrs. Gabriel. I've already reached out to Neola. We've exchanged a couple emails with Dr. Holland, and they actually are planning to put something out the first part of next week. It's reaching corporate level. He let me know that we're literally on the bleeding edge of all of this because we are continuing to have meetings, whereas other boards have elected to suspend their meetings. So they're catching up. So, yes, I will again reach out to public speaks in particular.
So if that stays, then why don't we just wait until we hear from Neola and not make this change at this point?
I didn't understand the question, but.
If Neola is about to make a recommendation about this, why don't we just wait till we get that since it should be forthcoming?
Right, I would agree that we need their policy in order to be able to to be able to set ourselves up for public speaks through the technology platform. Is there any other discussion?
I mean, I do feel that other boards have actually hosted board meetings during this time. They've just utilized the streaming like we are. And thank you, Ben, and to everyone who has been so diligently working on this. For us to be able to meet at home is an awesome thing, especially during COVID-19. But I do think that, I mean, we are listening to the emails. We do get them, and we do respond back to them, and we are listening to the public speaks part of it. I just feel at this time, when we're just all trying to get the meetings in and make sure the technology's working, that I feel that we could suspend public speaks just for this time during the emergency of the pandemic of COVID-19.
I find it interesting that we're now in an emergency where a week ago emergency and two weeks ago, we weren't in an emergency. Now, all of a sudden, we're going to take emergency measures. That says a lot, and that's very interesting that we're putting that in place now. So we're in emergency times.
I agree with you that we're in emergency times, Dr. Mason, but with all due respect, we did take great measures for last week's meeting, and that meeting had to take place. I mean, there is things that still need done, and there's township trustees that are still meeting and hosting meetings as well. I mean, government just doesn't shut down, unfortunately, especially during this time.
So what was so essential last time it had to be done? This is a good time.
Okay, we're talking about the motion to the motion on the table is to suspend board policy to cancel public speaks. Please stay on topic. Is there any further discussion on the public speaks?
Well, right, if this is an emergency that we can meet, then it should be a time that we can hear from the people that are being affected by this. I agree, it's picking and choosing when it's an emergency. But go ahead with the vote because you will vote as you want anyway.
And Mrs. Sutton did respond, excuse me, Mrs. Sutton did respond to that, that she's has corresponded with Neola. And when she has that policy information available, I'm sure she'll be passing it on to us as soon as she gets it. Please call the roll.
Carolyn.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Given that, wouldn't it be prudent to table the motion until we hear back from Neola?
Yes, I agree with that.
This is for only tonight's meeting. This isn't ongoing. This is to cancel public speaks for tonight's meeting because we're not set up to bring the public in remotely. And this is for this, excuse me?
Then it should be amended to say for tonight only. It doesn't say that.
It doesn't, it doesn't say that, it just.
This is unpermanent. This is for this evening's meeting only, and that was recommended by Mrs. Dawson. If we're not going to follow, if we're not able to follow our policy because we're not set up to bring the public in remotely, we need to cancel it for this evening.
Well, and remember, the other issue that we talked about is we collected everybody's speeches to read at the meeting if we so chose. I mean, and that's another option that the board has. As we did that last time we talked, was to collect all the speeches that we wanted them to be read at our meeting as well. So that is, that was another option you have. It has nothing to do with technology at all, to be honest with you.
How many letters do you have, Mr.?, How many letters do you have, Mr. Knoll?
I believe in that folder, we had four for the prior meeting. I believe four folks said they would be willing to submit them.
Can I ask a question about this? Was public speak suspended for last meeting?
Last meeting was a special meeting, and we don't have that. The policy is set up for public speaks at the regular meetings and not generally for the special meetings. And Katie and I had talked about that, and she didn't feel that we should put that on the agenda since it was a special meeting. So there was, there was no public speaks.
We have to list everything for a special meeting that we're going to have on the agenda on the notice. And so it just didn't seem like it really made sense for the special meeting.
Please call the roll.
So, so wait a minute, we haven't amended this motion to say for this meeting? This says suspend board policy to cancel public speaks. It does not say this is limited to a single meeting.
Yeah, if this is for this meeting, it needs amended to say this meeting. I agree.
Mrs. Gabriel, are you okay if we just amend it, just to add?
I haven't heard the amendment. I'm listening.
Okay, I thought Mr. Hagan said that it would be recommended motion to suspend board policies, cancel public speaks for this meeting. I think that's where Dr. Mason was as well.
Okay, so you made that motion, Mr. Knoll made that motion, or?
Well, I think that was Dr. Mason.
Dr. Mason made that motion?
Yes, I make that motion. Add for this meeting to the end of the motion.
I second that.
And is there a second?
Josh.
Yes.
Josh did.
Is there, pardon me?
Josh did.
Oh, Josh did, thank you. Is there any discussion on the amended motion? Katie, please call the roll on the, on the amendment.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphrey?
Yes.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
Then the motion on the table is the motion to suspend board policy to cancel public speaks for this meeting. Is there any, is there any further discussion on the original motion as amended? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphrey?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Katie, should I, should I have asked for a motion on that as amended, the original motion as amended?
Well, I believe you may, we had the original motion. We had a first and a second, then we made a motion to amend. We had a first and a second, we had the vote, and then we, to my understanding.
Okay.
On the amended motion.
Okay, so we're good on that?
That's, I mean, it's how you see it too. That's how I.
All right, thank you. Okay. Recommend, is there a motion to approve the resolution approving virtual public board meetings as presented and marked as exhibit C attached to your agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this, on this motion? Mr. Knoll, is, have the attachments been uploaded with the to the website?
To the website? No. The agenda is on there, and the plug smart presentation from last week, I believe, is on our website for tonight.
Okay.
They should be on your agenda. They should be attached to your agenda.
Well, right, but if the, if the public can't see it. Mrs. Sutton, I believe this is what you had worked on. Could you give just some brief comments about the, about this resolution? If you don't mind?
Sure, this is an emergency resolution in response to the pandemic and the governor's orders inclusive of House Bill 197. This just allows us as a board entity to have virtual meetings where everyone continued to have a voice and a vote. It's subject to an emergency status. If there ever was a reason to have an emergency reading for resolution, this is it. And it expires in December or at a time prior to that that we deem it could expire. Did you want me to read it in its entirety?
Um, I don't believe that's necessary, unless any, unless somebody has any questions, or is there further discussion on this? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphrey? Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero.
Recommend the motion to approve the OC contract as presented and marked exhibit U?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Who, who was that, who seconded?
I did.
I-
We'll give it to Hagan.
Okay, um, Mr. Knoll, could you go over, um, the changes on the, um, on the agreement?
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank, uh, OC President, uh, Trish Worley, um, for, for time and effort. Negotiations aren't always this easy, and, um, we were able to just basically roll over all the contract language, which to me, just kind of talks about the great working relationship that we have, uh, between the administration and the union, and I'm very grateful for that. So, there was no change in language at all. Uh, the OC folks do get the increase in salary at two and a half percent for the first two years, and they also do get an increase in the insurance, uh, which mirrors the agreement in the M E A as well.
Okay, um, no other changes on that, then?
No.
And you said this matches, then, the teacher's contract at this point?
That's correct, as far as the salary and insurance goes, yeah.
Are there any further questions or discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphrey?
Yeah.
Mr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the Board of Education of the Marlington Local School District to join the Ohio School Pipeline Coalition as presented and marked exhibit B?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
There was a first and a second on that, Katie?
Say, uh, can, tell me who-
The Dr. Mason, Mr. Hagan.
Okay, that's, okay.
Uh, Mr. Knoll, could you, um, go over, um, go over this agreement?
Sure, uh, we had talked about this a few months ago, but basically, this is the coalition that's being, uh, kind of established in the state of Ohio for those of us that are pipeline districts. This is a coalition that's basically just coming together to, um, share information and to try to get some advocacy, basically, to, you know, find out ways that we can combat the, uh, the pipeline industry and, um, them trying to get a decreased, um, assessed evaluation through this appeal process. So, um, we are joining that group tonight. There was a nice article in the paper about it a week or so ago. Um, a lot of other districts in Starred County have joined and or will be joining. So, it's just an opportunity to have some advocacy, uh, get our voices heard, and hopefully have a, a, a way to kind of combat the, uh, the, the industry here when it comes to these appeals, amended appeals.
Um, what is the cost of this?
Five hundred dollars to be, uh, be a member.
And is there any additional cost, or what should we anticipate the additional cost to be?
Um, I participated in a phone call today, and the game plan moving forward is still undecided. Um, there's a couple options that are out there, but once this group, um, kind of picks some officers and some bylaws, um, we're going to have some other conversations about exactly what those dollars could be. And they made it very clear at any time that if the board decided, you know what, we don't want to pay anymore, or we don't want to go forward, we're able to, to basically just leave at that point. But there'll be a lot more information to follow.
Is there additional discussion on this? So, at this point, we don't know, uh, we don't have any idea about the financial commitment? Or do you have a guesstimate on that?
I have no dollars and cents right now, no. No, that's still to be determined, other than the five hundred dollars to start, to start working on some advocacy, uh, looking at lobbyists, those types of things.
And that will assist us with the current valuation that's, um, occurring? The, the current valuation challenge?
Correct.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphrey?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved five zero.
Administrator reports, online learning update, Mr. Knoll and Mrs. Sutton?
Okay, thank you. Well, let me start by saying, I am once again amazed, but never surprised about the Marlington Local School District. Our online remote learning is, as you know, up and running, and it has been no easy task. And I need to give a good shout out to Mr. Sutton, um, all of our teachers and administrators for coming together, and getting our remote learning up and running. Just a little history here, I, I take you back to when I got hired in two thousand twelve. There were two things I looked at in the district that were significant needs. One of them were science labs, they looked the same as they did when I was walking them halls thirty-some years ago. And the other one was the lack of technology in the district. At that time, the board of Mrs. Krupko, our own Mrs. Gabriel, Mr. Francis, Mr. Ryan, and Mr. Fisher, shared and supported our vision of getting technology in the hands of our teachers for teaching and learning. It's because of that, that we are where we're at today. We did a little fundraising initiative, uh, back in two thousand twelve to get iPads in our middle school, and that's what jumpstarted and got us to where we're at today. I say that because I listened to the governor and other superintendent friends of mine that talk about how they were not prepared for this remote online learning. And that's not the case here at Marlington, which I'm very proud of. It's been a, a big commitment on our part, but the resources that we have in place, and the tools that we have for our teachers, um, are allowing us to be successful moving forward in this really weird world of education. I also need a shout out to our classified staff, as you know, we're doing lunches for our community. We're doing grab and goes on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. Mrs. Cole tells me we are handing out four hundred and forty meals each day to our community. And we're also doing about fifteen to eighteen home deliveries with families as well. And we're going to change our, our delivery model here in the next couple of weeks to hopefully reach more families, and I'll be talking more about that. I also have to thank our community members in this time of, uh, kids being in home and online learning. I've had churches, parents, folks asking me, what can you do to help and donate? Once again, not, not, never surprised at what our community can do, but I want to thank those individuals as well. So, here's what I know, just to talk about moving forward here. I know we have spring break coming, so for our kids that are working hard at home, and we appreciate that, spring break is Thursday, April ninth, to Tuesday, April the fifteenth. Schools are now not open to students through Fri- Friday, May the first. That was a directive from the governor earlier in the week. For our parents of K two, uh, you need some new learning packets, and our teachers and administrators have those packets ready for K two to be picked up at Lexington and or Washington starting on Monday. Okay, so you can drive up, you can go into Lexington in the front lobby and pick them up, or Washington, they're going to be right outside, they're underneath the canopy to pick up. The other thing I know is I'm going to continue to communicate during this remote learning time, uh, with our families. I've been trying to send you all out a weekly text on Monday mornings, just kind of saying, here's the game plan for this week. I'm going to continue with my Tuesdays with Mr. Knoll, or a Monday, uh, kind of email to just kind of highlight what's going on, um, as well during the week. And the last thing I know is, and this to me, my personal thing, is the most important. It's about mental health and wellness. I've been talking for the last couple of years about how important mental health is and making connections with our kids. As superintendent, this is the worst thing that could have happened, because now we have kids that maybe aren't as connected as well now, because we're at home, we're doing everything we can with our teachers, but we don't have clubs, we don't have the choir, we don't have the musicals, you know, we don't have our sports now. So, I'm really concerned about that piece of the puzzle. I know we got families that maybe don't have jobs now, or laid off, or furloughed. I know many of us are teaching our kids at home, working with our teachers as well, and now that's hard. Um, I'm going to keep sending you resources, our principals will, we have a webpage of things. But I need to tell our parents this, when you, when you go on the airplane and the stewardess, that oxygen mask falls down, what is their first thing he or she says? Put the oxygen mask on yourself first. So, as parents, you got to take care of yourself. And I'm talking about me here as well, I'm trying to walk the dog a little more, I'm trying to get some more sleep, I'm trying to take care of myself, um, because I know, and I appreciate the words of encouragement from many of you, that you know how stressful Mr. Knoll's superintendent job is now as well. But let's, let's take care of ourselves first, as parents, as teachers, and then we're going to take care of our kids. And I guess I would just leave you with this. This is an opportunity for Marlington to be a shining light in this district and in this community, and I want us to be that. If there's anything that you as a family need, whether it's food, anything, please email me. We have a ton of resources in this community and people that are willing and able to help. I want to take that off your plate as much as I can, so email me, we'll do everything in our power to take care of you. And, uh, we're going to get through it, and we're going to be that shining light. So, Mrs. Sutton, let me turn it over to you, because I know you're going to get a little more in detail about what's going on K twelve in teaching and learning.
Yes, okay, um, just wanted to, Mr. Knoll did a great job of an overview of what's happening, but I wanted to give you, the board, some details about, uh, what the expectations are for each level of learners. Um, our students in grades two, are you, uh, Mr. Knoll talked about they're learning from packets, uh, from paper, paper packets and activity packets, and they'll get their second round of packets starting next week. Those learning kits or learning packets are being graded for completion. So, if the student completes the packet, they earn, um, checkmark, and they'll get, uh, graded for that. Our students in grades three through twelve, they're continuing their blended learning model, that being, is being delivered through Schoology, and they're being graded for accuracy. They're meeting with their teachers, um, once per week. Teachers checking in with them online and using checklists. Our students in grades six through eight are using checklists in addition to being graded for accuracy. The checklists are organization and tracking completed of, um, workload. Grades nine through twelve, teachers, um, are checking in, uh, with their principals, uh, along with teachers in grades six through eight, teachers in grades three through five, teachers in grades K two. They're all checking in using Google Meet at a specific time with their principal. They're planning together, all the assignments are grade specific. Nine, twelve, um, weekly department meetings with the principal through Google Meet. The teachers are required to check in with their students once per week. Um, they're dividing those students up through their academic assist lists, and we're meeting connectivity issues, um, through the principals. Any connectivity issues with students are being reported immediately. I want to let you know also that our counselors are meeting with our at-risk students using email, phone, Google Meet. Those, continuing those connections are really important, and then they're imperative to our students' well-being. And I wanted to let you know that our family support specialists are still working behind the scenes. They're in constant contact with each other and our district families to make sure that our families are getting their basic necessities. We've connected them to food pantries and landlords. We also, uh, are helping to support a couple of our homeless families, um, during this time. Our principals are working remotely, checking in with all their teachers at least once per week. Uh, they've developed, um, also, uh, weekly meetings, um, with themselves at levels. So, the elementary principals are meeting together either daily or weekly. We're also meeting as an administrative team, typically Monday mornings, and then we schedule meetings throughout the week, um, as we need them. Uh, this week, um, we, we've got a couple face-to-face meetings in addition to our earlier meeting this week. The tech department and I start our meeting, start our days off together, we meet every morning. I, I want to give a huge shout out to our tech department. When we first got the heads up that we thought we were going to be going out, um, to remote learning, I came back from a meeting from the county and gave that information to Mr. Davis and Mr. Siders. And literally, they, um, prepared all of the student devices, uh, grades six through twelve, with the help of the building principals and some tech department staff, Mrs. Longer was helping at the middle school as well. But our three-five devices were the challenge, because those devices typically did not go home. They were able to prepare every student iPad to get ready to go home within hours. We did not have to send them home on Wednesday, but they were ready to go. We just needed the governor's order that we were going to close school. That was a monumental task to make that happen, um, and they, they deserve huge applause for that. Um, I also wanted to let you, um, know as a board, we do have some students who have connectivity issues. Uh, we handed out all ten of our mobile hotspots that were purchased in the district. Um, also, we're making sure that our families are hooked up to the free resources. Spectrum, Verizon, AT&amp;T have all stepped up statewide, um, countrywide, to help support families and, uh, our students with online learning. And we are also, um, making sure that any students who have connectivity issues, we're addressing those head-on. And the last that we reported this week, we have less than seven students who are having connectivity issues, um, ongoing connectivity issues. Teaching and learning in general, I want to let you know that we've created a live binder for our parents. It's listed, or it's hosted on the front page of all the building websites. We update it every day. Uh, there's resources in there, not only for education, socio-emotional, um, resources, and any basic needs that our families might have. Staff resources are located in all their usual places, but we also created a link that's called COVID Resources or Remote Learning Resources, that's located on the staff information page. We're also updating that multiple times a day. Schoology and email, um, we are experiencing some, uh, shortages there. Shutdowns and lags is what they're calling them. Quite simply, they're traffic jams. If you've ever been in a large traffic jam, everybody trying to get on the highway all at one time. We've witnessed this for the last two weeks. We've noticed this week especially, um, we've had more traffic jams, lags. That's because everybody came back from spring break this week. Most everybody was on spring break in the week prior, they came back on to spring break this week. Schoology's doing a fantastic job of communicating with us as a user. Just to give you, um, some numbers, they experienced an increase in their usage in the last four days. It was up four hundred percent. It, that's unheard of. They, they have met that capacity, they're working tirelessly to make sure that there's closing those gaps, and we're seeing less and less interruptions. If you have a family member or a friend who has been displaced from their job, and they've been trying to get unemployment, I will tell you that hit my own house. My husband spent five days tirelessly trying to access unemployment, and finally, on the fifth day, he did. It's the same kind of overload. Typically, the unemployment office, um, takes in twelve unemployment cases in one day. Over the past week, they've taken over three thousand in one day. That's the sort of surge that we're seeing with Schoology and our email systems as well. Finally, on my party words, a month ago, we would have- Finally, on my parting words, a month ago, we would have never dreamed that we would be educating our students in this scenario. Our world has drastically changed. I don't need to remind everyone of that, you only need to watch the news for five minutes. Our current reality is frightening. However, I do want to take a moment to sincerely thank our district families. Our community, our previous Board of Education, our current administrators, our tech team members and Mr. Noel for forward thinking four years ago. Because of that, we as a district have the right tools, the right training and the right mindset. To make the situation we're facing with learning not only possible, but successful. I left my curriculum director's meeting three, four weeks ago, now it's been four weeks ago. Confident that we were going to be able to do this, have called upon to do it. We not only are doing it, but we were ready to go within hours. We still have some of our colleagues in Stark County who are just now getting devices in the, the hands of their students. So thank you to the board for making this a possibility and thank you to our families for supporting education at home. That's it, that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Financial update, Mrs. Berger.
Hi there. My goal was to present my five-year forecast to the board early in April. Since I'd not had the opportunity to do more than a small update to the previous, previous treasurer's report or forecast. Unfortunately, when there's a viral outbreak that causes children to stop attending school, it changes spending patterns and ultimately takes up. Even more concerning are the signs of potential economic recession that we are hearing about. I sat in a webinar this week and they spoke on how the recession of 2008 was financially driven. And there were many warning signs before it hit. The one, this one is different in that. The economy's financial health was significantly better beforehand. And it has been driven by fear. The opinion seems to be that the recovery will be quicker than the last recession due to these factors. However, the financial impact will likely be a result of how long everything remains to be shut down. There will also likely be an impact on state funding, but it's hard to tell at this point what that will look like. Those are just some items that I had learned in my webinar that I was part of. I'd also like to say words about my financial update that I prepared for the conference. I, I wanted to eventually be able to. At this point, I, everything is still on, and I feel like.
Katie, we can't, I can't hear you.
Yeah, I can't hear you either. After you said at this point, it just went mute. Is she still there?
Katie?
Oh, I think I hit mute by accident.
Can you rewind a bit?
Somehow I hit mute, I don't know how I did that. You're good now?
It cut off right after you said at this point.
Okay, well, I'll just start on my last spot. So I wanted to have a chance to speak on my, my update that I had done in March. And actually go over it with you, but at this point, I feel like it might just create more confusion. Especially in the public, because in a few more weeks, I'm going to do an actual forecast. And with everything I just talked to you about. Everything's going to change, you know, the book is being completely rewritten with children not attending school. You know, it's, it's all new territory right now, so. Like I said, I, I wanted to go over that, but now I'm thinking that. The best, anyway, I'd, I'd like to speak on it a little bit. The financial updates that I prepared for the March meeting, a lot of time when in preparation went into that report. And I made it very clear on slide two of your presentation of that report. Tool for information to encourage discussion for the district's future financial plan. Slide three also says that it is the best, it is the best estimate of information that we know at two given points in time. And, and you know, the forecast is the target. This economic situation is really good. It shows how things move, you have one, one thing happen, it can just change your whole entire outlook. Anyway, despite whether we agree or disagree on the staffing in the report. That was my best information that I had at the time. Furthermore, these meetings compared to the real issue. The main focus of my report was line 6.010, revenue and expenditures. On the November forecast, we are projected to expend by $1.3 million in fiscal year 2021. The main focus of my report was not about Marlboro. It was about how we are going to fix the overspending. My hope with that report was to foster discussions on how we're going to get spending back on track. Nevertheless, I'm not going to spend any more time tonight on that topic because with everything going on in the economy right now. My main forecast is likely going to look totally different. And I don't want to confuse anybody. But I did want to take a moment to do what I've been hired to do and try to keep us focused on where we need to improve financially. Secondly, as I mentioned, sorry. Secondly, as I mentioned last meeting, something else I want to bring up. Again, food service has been trending downward the last couple of years in cash balance. In my opinion, it will likely end up negative at the end of the year and require a fund transfer from the general fund. No funds can end up negative at the end of the year. As the epidemic situation may cause further strain on the fund. I've been reviewing the revenues and expenditures in this fund and trying to sort out what should happen to correct these issues. But I want the board to be aware that, you know, this has been going on. For a couple of years, this decline in fund balance in that fund. And then we need to figure out how to correct that issue. And I'm working on it right now, but I like, I would not be surprised if we need to do a transfer from the general fund. And I just, I want to make you aware of that. Additionally, I've included in Dropbox the PI fund update that Mrs. Gabrick had requested. Mrs. Gabrick, did you find that?
Yes, I have that, thank you.
All right. That is the summary and projection for the PI fund for the remainder of the fiscal year. We are going to receive an estimated 191,000 in revenue, not just an estimate. And in June to close out the year. I plan on bringing transfers in yellow. Back to the board, which right now, those are estimates, that's all I get the final number on what we receive. To balance out the fund. Mrs. Gabrick also asked me about a gas lease. And we were able to locate that information where it was used for a roof project. In the amount of 260,380. That was transferred to the fund in 2017. To be used, it was used in the middle school roof project. So hopefully that information helps you out, Ms. Gabrick.
Thank you.
Questions on that. And so that's my piece on the PI fund. Ms. Gabrick, do you have any questions on that report?
The balance in the P, PI fund now is what amount?
The balance I have on my report right here, according to my fin sum. Cash balance. Total PI fund. Cash balance before encumbrances, when the PI fund was 551,347 at the date I did this report.
What is it after encumbrances?
Oh, let's see, after encumbrances, 15,000. And then we have estimated receipts coming in for, of taxes. Still, for the remainder of the year.
Do you know how much that's going to be and when?
It'll be before June, we already received the rest of our settlement before June. I, I talked to the county auditor today, he wasn't even able to give me a date on ordering our final settlement. But I anticipate an ending balance of just over 230,000-ish. Thanks from what we received. The report's in Dropbox.
Were there further questions on the PI fund? Did that answer your questions?
Oh, I just had a question. As far as the, the nexus money that are transferred into the improvement fund. At this point, the payment and future payments were pretty much guaranteed at the uncontested amount, is that correct?
The payments of the un. Yeah, the, what was the word, the un.
The unchallenged portion.
Unchallenged portion, yeah, we'll be getting those. I spoke to the auditor today, I was gonna, well, I have that information in a different, but I can talk, talk to you about it now. So there will, okay, we'll receive. For example, in this payment, around 842,000. In total, and 30,000 dot, 842 and then 30,000 will be. For Fund 003, which is also a PI fund. So those are sectioned off because of the type of. Like the type of.
Leibys.
Yeah. Total would be 872,600. And then in speaking with the county auditor. They charge auditor fees of 1.2%. So that comes out for like, and I'll be $400. So what I have net on my report is 862,200 for this year. That's the information that I just got as of today on that.
And when, when are we going to receive the next payment?
So we received 90% of funds on Wednesday. And I asked him about that because I expected to receive all of it. And he said they hold 10%, because this is an advance. And they will give the rest of it in the final settlement, which will be before June.
Okay, and then on that final settlement estimate, where, where are we looking in June?
The, so the total amount. That we get is going to be, the total revenue will be 872,600. And then you'll have auditor fees on it of about 1.2%.
Katie?
Yeah.
Do we have any indication that Nexus will challenge this further with this economic situation we're in now?
I discussed that with Mike, I talked to Mike Sobel about that, I've talked to so many people about this. I believe that discussion happened with Mike Sobel and he said that the Nexus has the ability to challenge the valuation annually.
That has really nothing to do with the current economic culture though. That's something that could happen every year based on, you know, what, what Nexus can do, so. And I, I would just see that to continue to happen, to be honest with you. I mean, as long as it doesn't get ruled in their favor, I'll be.
But the two payments that we are to receive in this calendar year. Will be the 872,000 minus the auditor's fees, is that correct, Katie?
Yes, and just, I wanted to make sure you guys understood that the majority of it will be in 070 and 30,000 of it will go into 003. I mean, essentially, they work very similar, but I just want to make sure you understood that. That they would be, that's how that would go.
Okay, and that portion won't be further challenged because that's based on the valuation that was put on it last year, correct?
Correct, correct, the 872 is solid.
Okay. Twice, right?
Yeah, for the rest of the calendar year, yes, solid.
Yes, okay. And then back to your comment on the decline in the fund balance. And we were trending down with spending more than we were taking in. Just a little bit of history on that, a couple of years ago, the auditor informed our treasurer that if we didn't start spending some of our carryover, we could. Possibly lose some funding. If we were showing we were keeping too much and not spending it, it possibly, they could have said we didn't need it. So the board did move a significant portion into the capital improvement fund and then spent it on. Capital improvement projects, which involved several. Several capital improvement projects that involved the athletic facilities. And so we did a significant amount of spending in part with that, so. Some of that decline was, was planned to, so that we didn't lose any funding over that. So I guess what we need to look at is, are we scaled back now to where we're just paying bills? And we're, I know we're on target with the buses because we just purchased five of them, if you could speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, I'm specifically only, I'm not looking at past numbers. I'm specifically looking at this year and going forward, so.
Oh, I thought you said we were trending down with our, with our fund balance based on what we've done.
That's food service, that, that's completely different, your, food service is not even in, that's not in the general fund. So that's something completely, I'm sorry, I, maybe I didn't explain it well enough, so.
You're, you're cutting in and out a little bit, so it's a little bit hard to hear.
Okay, sorry. I think what you're speaking to maybe is food service. Food service the last couple of years, that's Fund 006. That's not the general fund.
Right, but I thought we were talking about the general fund and your concern about our spending, I thought that's what you were talking about was our general fund.
Speaking to, there, there are two different pieces. The first part of what I was talking about is, I was discussing general fund. The trending down the last couple of years where I was talking about that, that was talking about food service. Anything historical, that, that was talking about food service. And. And how I've been doing some research on how to, so I, I, I don't know if maybe I didn't explain it well enough. But anything with regard to the general fund. I'm really looking and focusing at current year and forward. And how we can raise the ship on revenue over expenditures. I'm less focused on historicals because I'm well aware of the capital expenditure. And, and that, I mean, if you can easily remove the capital pieces out of the forecast and, and, and look at that.
But it did significantly affect our carryover balance.
I'd have to look at it, but, but the main point is 6.010. Hey, I'd have to look at it. The, but the main point is six point oh one oh should not be negative. That's the point. And that's what we need to focus on. Because that.
So, do you, um, you had said, um, when we spoke at our last meeting and we were talking about um. Planning financially for um repairing the schools. That you would have a report ready for, that you needed till Monday to get the figures ready to talk to us about that. Do you have those ready to talk to us about tonight so we can discuss the financials?
I need to tell Monday to um. Check on matters with regard to a four twelve certificate. I still don't know what the board plans for what they want to do with projects. That, uh, we still need to have those discussions. What exactly do you? Plan on doing with these projects? We can talk about it. I mean, and I know what your revenue's gonna be. That's all, that all has to happen in discussion tonight and. So, yeah, let's have those discussions. But when I said Monday, that was more checking into what we did, what, what needed to happen as far as. And as far as the four twelve.
Okay, um, so can you just explain that maybe in layman's terms, what, what you mean by that?
Oh, um, the mo- as far as, you had asked me, I believe, about um. The four twelve certificate is certifying the availability of funds. And um, so we were talking about. The eight seventy-two. And the one point seven being available within the calendar year. And you had asked me, well, it crosses over fiscal years. Is that considered multi-year? Because you need a four twelve for multi-year agreements. And I said, oh, well, let me check into that. I just want to make sure we're doing this correct. So that, that's.
So are we? Are we okay with that then?
Yes, we're fine.
Okay.
That's what I was checking into.
Okay, so we're good on that. And then um. The six point oh one oh, what's the figure on that line?
Six point oh one oh on the five-year forecast?
Whatever you're talking about that should not be negative.
Oh, uh, just look at the five-year forecast, line six point oh one oh. I don't have it sitting in front of me right now.
The, the latest forecast has it as a positive balance of through thirty thousand two hundred and eleven on the five-year forecast for fiscal year twenty twenty.
Right, I was speaking to line twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one is. One point two five million in the red.
Right. And so that speaks to, what that's saying is your, your revenue is that less than your expenditures. And so when that happens, you want to start having discussions on what you're going to do to correct that. And it's my job to, to talk, you know, to kind of bring that to your attention and say, you know, what are we going to do? To correct that.
So what's your recommendation?
To have a discussion about it.
We're listening.
The treasurer, if you want me to share some thoughts.
As the treasurer, I just work with the numbers and I just report to the board. It's not my duty to, to make a whole lot of recommendations.
Which folder, Josh, which folder is that five-year forecast in?
I, I just pulled it up on the school's website.
Oh, just on the school.
On the treasurer's portal. It's quickest way to find it.
As the ladies and I have been talking, guys, um, I, I just want to share some, some thoughts on this whole issue as well. Um, you know that we've been getting a lot of emails from our community, uh, concerned. Um, you know, we have a lot of grief, a lot of stress, a lot of anxiety. I hear the treasurer talk about that negative line, and it's very concerning to me as well. Um, I know people are worrying about stay-at-home orders being laid off, um, not having food. There's just a lot of things that aren't in our control right now with what we're dealing with. But as far as a cost-saving measure, to answer Mrs. Gabriel's question, what is an option, I'll be very blunt. My first recommendation is, let's don't oh reopen Marlboro next year. And here's some of the rationale why. We, we have cost savings that we already know that we're going to be able to um keep by not opening that building up. I know we have Nexus money that's coming in, and I know we're earmarking it towards making repairs. Some of that conversation still concerns me. Um, the biggest thing I'm worried about is the same thing that, that Ms. Brigger talked about is our economy. And Mike Sobel is a guru in this world. Of school finance, and he has made it clear that. Depending on how long it takes us to get out of this funk and get back to work and get the economy going again. Two big pieces are going to be affected when it comes to school. One of them's property taxes, which is a big one for us, as you all know. And the second piece is state aid. And state aid is all based on the general revenue fund, which is sales tax and state income tax. And until things get rolling. That could be a problem for us. I mean, the governor's talking about twenty percent cuts. I don't know if that's going to come to fruition, but. I firmly believe we're going to have reductions in state aid. There's going to be a negative consequences in the next budget, which the treasurer knows more about it than I do. To me, just hit the pause button, being able to regroup, see how this looks, this process looks like going down the road. Knowing that we're going to have some additional cost savings by not reopening up Marlboro next year. Being able to do some more repairs while we don't have kids in there makes sense to me as well. Um, you know, being able to come up with a better comprehensive plan, you know, to me, as far as other needs in the district, talked about that last, last meeting. I just think it's, it's worth some conversation. I think it's a good question Ms. Gabriel poses. I think it's a good response and a good option for the board to take a look at. I'm interested in your thoughts.
Can you review, um, we had mentioned, um, within the last couple of meetings, possible um increases in um programming? I mean, for example, our um, our um pre-K that we are, are showing that it's out of district. I think this year on your report that you gave us for enrollment, we show that twenty-four pre-K are out-of-district students as well as twenty-one special needs. Uh, can you speak to um what revenue could be generated if we had that within our district?
Well, those families need to go to other districts based on their individual needs. So, which is fine. I mean, that's an option that every Marlington resident has. You know, they can choose to go to another district. If those kids choose to come here. Treasurer can tell you how much money that that would bring in per kid, if that's what you're looking for as far as a dollar amount.
Right. I mean, that's what we're looking for, is ways to increase revenue through our programming. And is that something you're willing to look at and get the figures back to us? I mean.
Well, I mean, Kate, Katie can tell you. I mean, it's not quite a fifty-fifty blend, but at six thousand twenty dollars per kid, we get the state piece of that versus the local. So is it like forty-seven percent? So is that accurate, Katie?
For, sorry, I was reading something. Sorry.
Let, let's say we have a resident kid and they choose to open enroll to Alliance. That kid goes to Alliance. If that kid decided to come back to us, Mrs. Gabriel wants to know how much money basically a Marlington resident could bring in to the district.
I'm, I am fairly certain that a resident student brings in our state share index times the sixty twenty. And I think our state share index is. I'd have to double-check on that because it could have changed since the last time I looked at it. I thought it was forty-two percent. So it'd be sixty twenty times forty-two percent if I'm not mistaken. I can double-check that number and get back to you on it.
So is there additional, um, is it weighted for children with special needs or is it still six thousand?
I believe it's weighted for children with s- special needs.
So are we looking at. Attracting these students back to our district so that, so that we have a program that would fit their needs?
Yes.
I think what's taking a lot of time um is these meetings and um looking to do something we don't mean to do. This is common sense. It's not difficult to understand. Why are we looking to try to make something up when we don't have to spend the money? That makes no sense. The kids fit into school. If this is a good plan, it can wait. It can be developed. It should wait to be developed.
And the caveat to that is you would have to attract enough children to justify hiring staff persons to offer that program.
Right, but if we have twenty-four pre-K that are out-of-district students and twenty-one special needs, I mean, perhaps that would be enough to attract a teacher.
Are you gonna get, make guarantee that you get them all back here, though? We're talking about.
That would be your job to work on that, I would think, or uh Mr. Noel's job to see um if we offer the programming, can we get these students back?
There's no way.
And then the students that we lost last year, have we reached out to them to see if we can get them back into our district?
Again, I think the time that this all is taking, the constant meeting, um, the pandemic and dealing with those things. I think it's unreasonable to be talking about this. Plans are up in the air. Nothing is laid out. The funding is not, uh, is so uncertain, up in the air again. Everything is up in the air. There is no reason that there can't be a time or the time taken to um look at a plan. Develop all the components of a plan. That's what a plan is. You have components. And you line them all up, and then you make your decision. You don't start making decisions, taking action on things before you have all the pieces together. That makes no sense. That's reckless. That's reckless spending. And that's what we need to just stop right now the talk of doing anything immediately. And we need to make, have the plan be brought forth. If it's worthy, if it's worthwhile, it works damn.
I guess I, I just want to clarify. I don't feel it's reckless spending to invest in all three elementary schools. When we sat with, when we sat in that meeting last, last week that we attended, it was a great plan that they put a lot of energy and effort into, and a lot of. Great information was given to us. And I just feel, we're not just focusing on Marlboro. We were focusing on all three elementaries and making those great repairs that need done desperately. I mean, we, we had put money into the middle school. We put money into the high school. And I guess I'm a little confused on how it's reckless when we were. Just in November, looking at building a consolidated elementary school with money that wasn't guaranteed. So this is something I feel that we could do. And guarantee that we get other kids back when we have an attractive program to offer them. And also just having the greatness of having our three elementary schools back is very important to the good programming. Our teachers are doing a fabulous job and they're doing awesome things, and our staff is amazing. But it would just be great to make the repairs needed to all three elementary schools, not just Marlboro, but Lexington and Washington as well.
But you have to have the money to do that, is the point. And have you listened to all those emails you're getting, Danielle, just like I am, from the parents? Who are saying, I, I don't want my school back to Marlboro. I, I like where things have gone. Again, these are the parents whose students are in the district.
And I understand that, Karen, and I do believe that we have received other emails as well, of positive, encouraging emails, just as much.
I haven't received those from, I mean, so you might want to tell those people to send those to me. Because I haven't received some people saying, hey, oh, yeah, come on, open up Marlboro. I haven't received those.
I guess, I mean, also when Josh and I, you know, this is beyond the point, but when Josh and I went door-to-door, a lot of people had expressed interest in having Marlboro reopen. Not just voters. We're talking parents. We're talking community members who are voters. So I just, I guess I'm confused on, you did support having a consolidated elementary school, which would have been a brand-new school. Which would have been spending more money that we didn't have in the first place. So I really still feel it's risky to make the repairs needed to all three elementary schools. I mean, we're still making repairs to the high school and the middle school as they're needed. So why not put money into our elementary schools and make them a better environment for our kids?
That's not true. That high school wouldn't be done to protect the investment that we just made with air conditioning, windows, and roofs. And that is not being talked about at all. All this being focused on, you, you just said we talked about all, we talked about all three elementary just in the last meeting. There's a plan for all three elementary that was laid out, but you said start with Marlboro.
Well, with, with the repairs, I'm sorry, go ahead, finish.
Um, at, just going back to another thing about, you know, talking about the, the election um with the voters. There are voters that are saying, this is not what they wanted. What you're doing right now said that, that you, you two said when you're running, that you would look at everything. If it made sense, if it was physically responsible, if it was the right direction, you would look at the whole thing, have a plan, and then you would go forward with it. And that's not what has happened. You immediately said, we're gonna do this, and now you are taking these steps without having the whole financial picture. And up in the air even more because of the pandemic. This is not hard to understand. This is common sense, and you just need to accept that, you know, a pandemic came through. Added to the other factors that, that are, are going on in our life, and we need to just pause it, just like everything else is being paused. That's common, and that's responsible.
I guess I have a question then for you, Karen, is what would we have done? Let's say that this board doesn't look the way it did, does now. And we would have went through of having a consolidated, brand-new elementary school, we would have been in, in even greater hurt financially. So I mean, are we not going to repair any of our elementary schools because COVID nineteen came in? I mean, we, we desperately need to repair.
You absolutely need to repair the ones that are operational, not openly one that we don't need. And the point about the consolidated elementary is that. Would not have happened because we would have been here already. That school wouldn't be up and running in May, uh, in April of twenty twenty. It, you had to go, we had to go through a whole process. We would have still been in the planning stages. We would have seen that was not possible, and it wouldn't have happened. So you, things change. You don't just say, if you're inflexible, it'll break. What, you have to have uh flexibility in order to, what, you know, a tree bending, like the palm trees bend. You have to have flexibility to, and change when things change. You, you guys have the perfect opportunity to say, this has completely changed things, this pandemic, because it has. It, and it's not feasible. And if, again, if it is a worthy and a worthwhile thing, it will be able to happen down the road. It might just take a little more time. So why not plan properly?
I hear it's a perfect opportunity now as, as a board to be responsible to our community members and our students and our staff and have three great elementary schools. That's all I'm saying. I mean, I just feel that we.
That's a good little mantra, but it doesn't work practically.
That we should be responsible, and we have a great opportunity now to do so to our staff, to our students, by having three great elementary schools, which we had to begin with. But we need to make the repairs needed. And the reason why we had chose Marlboro is because that one's closed, and we don't know when the governor is going to, or if he's going to let the kids go back this summer. Or before summer starts. So we just figured, there's no one in that building right now. Let's get that one done. While we don't have to worry about having students in there, and then doing Washington and Lexington as well, making all three elementary schools great places for our kids to be learning.
You still don't know the financial aspect. And you said, as a loan processor, that you are a risk assessment person. You don't know, you don't have all the information. How is that, how is it possible to make a good assessment of the risk? That does not, that doesn't bear weight. That is not, that's not responsible to say, I don't know what the financial is going to be. We don't know what this, this unknown is, but hey, we're gonna go ahead and move forward with it anyway. That's not responsible.
I don't think that's what we said, and I think we've done quite a bit of research, especially with the report that we just had come out from last week's meeting.
Well, I want to, I want to get back to the question that's Gabriel posed. How are we going to help with line six point oh one to help the treasurer sleep at night because we're in deficit spending? My, my response is, let's just take a year, okay, by not reopening Marlboro next year. Let's encumber those savings. Let's bring those savings in. Let's help that line, okay? Help us get going a little bit. Those are all good points that everybody's making. I'm still concerned on what the economy has in store for Marlington in the next year or so. I really am after listening to these professionals talk. So I agree that we're gonna, we're gonna fix elementaries, all three of them. I totally get that. I understand. Our, our problem is, we're spending more than we're making, and that's a concern.
Well, should we be looking, Mr. Noel? I think we need to be looking at all the pieces of that. I mean, have you looked at? I mean, have you looked at all the contracts, make sure that everybody's being paid correctly? Have we looked at cost savings by, um, contracting out for services? And for example, you know, with our utilities and things like that to make sure we're getting the best possible cost? Have we looked at every piece of our budget to see where corners can be cut with our existing costs? Or I guess maybe that'd be more for Katie, I guess.
Been working on, and I give Katie a lot of credit, cause she's had a lot of moving parts there in her first, you know, four or five months on the job. But she's done a good job of, of starting that process. Um, and like I said, I give her a lot of credit for doing that. So those things are being talked about and being done. Sadly, we're looking at not bringing on new programming in the district because of that, specifically at the high school, which I've shared with you guys. It's breaking my heart not to do that, but-
What programming are you not gonna recommend?
Well, like the ASL program.
The what?
The ASL and our home ec program as well, because those are extra costs that we're gonna have to take on. But we gotta be part of the solution as well here at the district level.
How many students are in those programs?
We don't have those programs currently.
Yeah, I can speak to that if you'd like, Joe.
Yeah, well, but I wanna make sure Ms. Gabriel understands, we don't have those programs right now. These are new programs that we wanted to bring into the high school for next school year. But that means hiring new staff, which is an extra cost. It's great to say we wanna keep adding programming, but with programming comes cost of teachers.
Right, but if we bring in, um, students that are not currently in our district, that revenue will come into our district with them, and that will add revenue. So I wanna make certain that we're looking at all the pieces and parts of that.
Oh yeah, there, there's no doubt about that, but I also respect those families that make those choices, just like our families that make homeschooling choices. They do that for a reason, and I respect that. And I, I really can't control all that. I mean, we, we sell Marlington, anybody that will listen, you guys know that if you talk to me. But as far as something that we can do, that the board has a, a, a choice to make, that could make a significant difference, this is number one on my radar list.
Um, I just look at it from the perspective of Marlboro Elementary being closed, or any one of our, closed. That in the long term, that could, district, uh, due to the fact, prolonged bus times for elementary students, specifically, it would decrease the amount of people I believe that would wanna even move into the area to have their kids attend, attend school there. And I think the four hundred thousand dollar savings doesn't compensate for how much of a negative it's gonna have down the road. Uh, but we definitely do need to look at our expenditures and find a way to make things work. Um, like I said, uh, you know, this trend is on the five-year forecast from last year, yet we were looking at adding programs to the high school or middle school. Uh, that, that's one thing that I don't understand, why would be, if we were already showing with the closure of bro, we were going into the red as far as six point oh one oh excess of revenue financing sources, sources, uh, by twenty-twenty-one. Um, the only year we were actually gonna show a savings was this year. And we've had deficit spending in the previous three years as well. Um, so I don't, I don't know why we were looking at adding additional, um, programs, uh, given, given the situation prior to reopening Marlboro. But as I point out once again, I look at four hundred thousand dollar, or less than four hundred thousand dollar cost to operate that school. We closed it and keep it closed, it's gonna cost us more down the road.
Yeah, I guess I don't understand.
Our district unappealing.
Why is it gonna cost us more down the road?
I couldn't hear it, except he was cutting out.
Yeah, I know.
I see it as, as people will not wanna move into the area when there's no local elementary school. Our, our district geographically isn't like any other district near us. The, from one, one side of the district to the other, not a question of just, let's just consolidate, everybody else is consolidating. Our district huge compared to all the surrounding districts. You know, for them to consolidate and bus kids to the school, it's not that complicated. But for our district, that's a huge, huge concern for a lot of parents. And in the attractiveness of our grade schools being local community schools, having that down the road for, for relatively close versus on the central campus like the high school and middle school, makes a huge difference when someone's deciding where to move to raise their kids. You know, you're gonna bus them forty, fifty, sixty minutes each way, um, that, that's a huge concern for a lot of parents.
Sixty minutes. We, we don't bus anybody fifty or sixty minutes. That, that, that's not accurate statement. I, I, I hear what you're saying, but that, that statement there is not accurate. But, but the question was posed, how, what can we do to lessen the, the, the burden on line six point oh one? I gave you my recommendation, that's one thing that's on the table. Yes, if you guys don't wanna move forward with that, totally understand. But we needed to respond to the question that was asked. That is one option that's right in front of us. If we choose not to do that, that's all I need to know and, and we'll move forward.
Right, and when I was asked about, when I was asked about what my thoughts were on that, um, if you look at any performance-
You're proposing that it's gonna take, go ahead, keeping Marlboro a year.
On the, yeah, sorry. Uh, when I was asked about my thoughts on that, when you look at any performance audit report, um, from the Auditor of State's office, they don't focus on bringing in more programming, they focus on what's controllable. And what's controllable is closing, or is, um, class sizes and making sure that you have reasonable amount of, um, students in your classes and, um, you know, using that to control your expenditures and, and, and those types of things. So, um, that's very valuable information and that would be my recommendation, is making sure that we're managing our class sizes and managing our expense, our student-teacher ratio and looking at those types of things. Um, and looking at, you know, who's retiring, who's gonna be retiring soon, and not replacing those, um, positions as they come up, because if we have declining enrollment, then we need to be rightsizing. So those are the types of things, Mrs. Gabriel, when you asked me what my thoughts were or my recommendations, that's how you handle, that's how you would, well, at least begin to handle that.
Okay, now, the board, the board has taken action to open Marlboro and repair the elementary. So in light of that, what is your recommendation?
Mine or Joe's?
Well, both of you, I guess.
Uh, Joe, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, what was the question again?
The board has already taken action to reopen Marlboro and to repair the three elementary schools. And you said you're on board with that. I just wanna hear how you're gonna make the finances work for that. We know the nexus money will pay for the repairs, and if we spread them out over three years, then that will cover the cost of the repairs, the major repairs and, um, projections that Pluxmart provided. So-
As enrollment declines, we have less kids coming to the district, we're gonna have to do like Mrs. Burger just said. We're gonna have to start not replacing people, we're gonna have to look at decreasing whatever type of program we have.
We're asking you to try to increase enrollment, um-
And we'll do everything we can, but the problem is that, it's not like there's more kids around us in this area. Every district that's around us has the same issue. We are all having declining enrollment.
And I've never seen an, an auditor of state perform a, performance audit recommendation say, you need to increase enrollment. They focus on what's controllable, right?
So if we have a pre-K program that we could bring into Marlington, why aren't we doing it?
What, what, what are you talking about, a pre-K program? What, what exactly are you talking about?
The preschool program that we have-
We, we already have preschool here at Marlington, we already do.
Are they Marlington students, or is it a Stark County program?
It is a Stark County program with Marlington students in it.
Right, so where does the money go for those children?
Mrs. Burger, can you speak to that?
Sorry, I, again, what was the question?
So all those kids that come to Marlington through that preschool program.
A preschool program with Stark County, that's run by Stark County, where do our tax dollars go?
For the preschool program, oh, um, are tax dollars that go through the preschool program?
Yes.
Um, well, I know that we have a preschool program through the ESC, I've only been here three months, so, um, I know we have a preschool program through the ESC that we pay for. So I'm assuming we're paying the ESC for these preschool students?
Well, we're, we're, we're paying, we're paying for those teachers. They're teach, they're not Marlington employee teachers, they're ESC employees. Teaching our, our pre, preschool kiddos with some special needs kids in there as well. That, that's the model. I think Mrs. Gabriel-
So why can't we make that a Marlington program? Is that not an option?
It is an option. It is an option in neighboring district.
Can I inter, can I interject? I, I can maybe speak to that just a little. Mr. Swisher is working on, um, the cost, the cost analysis of that particularly. But the biggest benefit that we get from having, um, the ESC sponsor our preschool is economy of scale. Because we can share very expensive services for preschool, like psychologists, occupational therapists, speech therapists, um, counseling. We can share those services with other preschools because the services that our preschoolers need are so specific to early childhood learning. We can typically not get that in our, um, K-12 setting. So the savings comes from economy of scale. For us to produce our own preschool, top to bottom, including staffing and equipment, my guess is gonna be, um, when Mr. Swisher brings that to us, that it's gonna be a lot more money for us to house and produce our own preschool than it is for us to utilize the county's programming.
And we wouldn't be allowed to share, um, share the special services with them if we did our own, is that what you're saying? That's not available?
That's something Mr. Swisher will be able to speak to in detail. I, I don't, I'm not confident enough in that contract or our conditional contract with the ESC to answer that. Um, I can just tell you that I know from just experience that that's where those cost savings come from, is because of the economy of scale and the specialty of early learning, that, you know, we have great psychologists in our district, but generally psychologists, occupational therapists, speech therapists that deal with preschoolers are specialized in early childhood learning. And I did, if I can, I'd like to go back and address Mr. Hagan's comment or question about increasing programming. And what, the question about why we had chosen to do that. When I came onboard in two thousand fifteen, CCP was brand new. And we, um, we were just trying to navigate our way through that. And in the course of a couple of years, two years, we were seeing what we consider to be a mass exodus of our students, um, taking courses outside of our district, because we did not have enough academic electives that were challenging to them. So the curriculum committee at that time, and they have continued with that, we made a commitment to increase academic electives at the high school level to keep our resident students here, our top CCP students here. And we have been hugely successful in that endeavor. Adding ASL as a foreign language and adding, um, food and consumer sciences, returning food and consumer sciences, those, as I presented in February's board meeting, would be a net zero to us because we were, we already have two retirements coming at the high school or in other parts of the district. So we aren't adding any additional financial cost. In fact, it would be a little bit less, but we'd be adding other academic electives for our students. The other point that I wanna make about changing programming is because, I, and I mentioned this again at the February meeting, the, the opening up Marlboro doesn't just affect elementary students. It will affect our high school programming, it will affect our high school staffing. It will also affect our middle school programming and our middle school staffing. We were fortunate enough in, when we closed Marlboro, that we were able to absorb at the middle of filter who held a health license. That enabled us to develop that life schools course at the middle school that we needed and is doing, needing a lot of children's needs, that we did not have that opportunity previously. Plus, it afforded us a female PE teacher at the middle school. And I don't think I need to remind everybody what it was like at middle school to take PE. None, nobody liked it, cause you had to be with the boys, or you had to be with the girls. Well, we offer, we have a female teacher doing that. So I just wanted to address that with Mr. Hagan, to kinda give you that little bit of history and the commitment that previous boards have made. And we adopted a program of studies, um, which in December, that addressed, um, the options of ASL as a foreign language or a world, a world language, and also family and consumer clients that are trying to gain that back. I hope, I hope that cleared that up for everybody.
Let me step in here. I haven't got a chance to get a word in edgewise here, but, um-
Sorry, Dr. Mason.
Jonathan, four hundred thousand dollars, we can bring in students to cover that. If you take six thousand dollars, divide that into four hundred thousand dollars, you get almost seventy students. So we would need to recruit, bring in seventy new students to cover the four hundred thousand dollars that we're seeing. Seventy new students. Now, I'm not sure where that's gonna come from. Unreasonable to, I think, say, Mr. Noel, go out and find seventy new students, because there aren't seventy new students out there. If you wanna grow in the townships, that's a trustee problem. Where's the, where's the trustees promoting growth? If we want a lot of, hey, why don't we have housing projects? That's not a school problem, that's a township problem. And, and I'm not sure what the expectation is of Mr. Noel to go out and grow the, grow the programming at a rate of seventy students. And, and that's really one, I just, I, I wonder that piece. The other piece that I have, Katie, could you tell me, how much, how much do we get from the state? What is our total state aid?
Um, I'd have to, I don't have that report with me right now.
Okay, so ballpark.
Ballpark. Um, while she's looking for that, while she's looking for that, sorry Scott. Can I ask Mr. Noel, have you already, um, do you have any numbers for, um, the upcoming school year? I mean, I know kindergarten roundup hasn't happened, right? And, um, we don't, again, there are so many variables that's still up in the air. But, um, do you have any number of the upcoming, um, school year for elementary schools?
Yeah. Yeah. Are you, is that mic still there?
You okay?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a lot of feedback.
Yeah, feedback is coming, I don't know.
Hey, Joe, um, it looks like I'm seeing two connections from you.
Oh.
And they seem to be fighting with each other. I think that's where the feedback's coming from.
That's not good. Let me, let me just hang up.
Um, did you do something just within the past few minutes, um, that might have opened another connection?
Yeah.
Yeah, if, if you have multiple tabs open, if you can just close one of them, that should fix it.
Well.
We lost him.
And we lost him completely. I'm, I'm sure he's gonna get connected back up here in Marlboro. At least there's no more feedback. Yep, yep.
Here he is.
There we are. Okay, I think we're back in business. Are you back, Joe? You're, yep, there we are.
Okay, awesome. Sorry about that. Um, Ms. Humphries, I, I- Ms. Humphries, I thought you hit me with a question on like numbers for next year?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
I don't have all of that in front of me, but based on what the boundaries that I've set that I'll be talking about in next board meeting, I know for Marlboro, there are 161 kids that are going to be assigned to Marlboro for next school year. Now, there's only 12 kindergartners in there as well, just because our kindergarten registration, you know, didn't happen as well as it should have. But usually we expect two classes in there, so there might be another, I'm hoping maybe we get another 20 or so. So, you know, I would say right now, if things go well, we're to any intradistrict enrollment. Remember, you guys approved that a couple of meetings ago where if a parent says, hey, I wanted to stay at Lexington, they can fill out a form and we have to look at that as an option as well. So that's kind of where Marlboro was earmarked from what I can remember.
Okay. Dr. Mason, you there?
Yes.
So, um, looking at the foundation report, you're just basic overall, your state aid, not including all the other stuff, not right around 9.2 million. That's not including your open enrollment in or out.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
9.2 million. And the governor has mentioned 20%. Has anyone else heard that where he said, he mentioned a 20% cut on the board, the state budget?
Yeah.
Okay, so that is $1.84 million to Marlington. Now, stay on your seats. I'm operating here with a calculator next to me, so I, so 20, so 1.
Did he say 20% across the board or 20% overall?
20% in the largest single piece of expenditure in the state budget is education. So education.
They said they're cutting education by 20% already?
No, he said he's cutting the state budget by 20%. And that may be a minimum of what he's doing because of the drop in tax money that's coming in. He mentioned 20%. He's the governor. We have to operate on the sense that something's going to happen. So let's say it's 10%. 10% is $900,000. Where are we going to come up with $900,000? Joe, let me just throw this out. How many positions would we have to riff to save $900,000 and then double that to 1.8?
That's going to be a lot of positions. So I would say if you use $80,000 as a teacher with benefits, that's probably a good place to start.
So $900,000.
Divided by 80,000.
Hey, while you're doing some math there, could you, could you look up, let me know what our, you know, we always looked at 10 years ago what our enrollment numbers were. Joe, could you get some figures together as far as how much staff and teachers at that point in time versus now? So we can get an idea of how that correlates?
Sure. Yeah, I don't, I don't have that in front of me, but we can, we can go back and take a look at that. Yeah.
So at $900,000, that's 11 and 1/4 teachers. So it's 25 and 1/2 teachers if it's 20%. Now, again.
Does that law, Scott, has that been, that's written into law at this point that there's a 20%, at least a 20% cut?
That is, the governor has said he's going to cut the state budget by 20%. I'm sure he's not going to, no politician's going to stand out there and say that unless they mean it. So that's.
That's the overall state budget. They didn't say how much, if any, they were going to cut from education, correct?
They're going to, they're going to cut 20% across the board, but give 50 whatever percent, which is education, all of its money. That makes no sense. So they're going to cut the rest of the state budget by 40%? I don't think they can, I don't think they can do it.
Did they say specifically where they were going to make cuts?
No. The budget's not out, but he's going to make the cuts. You can guarantee it. It's, we can, we can do this. We can play this game. We can say, oh, they're not going to make, they're going to make cuts. Our funding is going to be cut.
Yeah.
Now, we can go into this blind, say, oh, I didn't know this was coming. End up cutting, 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 cutting. Or we can go in with preparedness, knowing this is happening. This was not a plan of anyone's. No one planned this pandemic to occur. No one could plan ahead for it. But it's happening and we have to be realistic to it. We have to be realistic to the people in our, in our school district who are going through this. To say we should spend, spend, spend in a time we know, we know our funding's going to be cut. I don't think, I think you could put your head in the sand and say, oh, they won't cut education. He will cut education. Now, maybe not 20%, but if this continues on, if we continue with the quarantine on May, June, and maybe it creeps back up into fall, and we do it again because the COVID comes back out again when it cools back down, which is a real possibility as the Spanish flu did 100 years ago, we might be in another situation where we're quarantined once again. And so for us to say, well, let's just spend and deny that this is going to happen is irresponsible. If we're talking about financial responsibility, which is what Danielle, you and Josh ran on that. You said financial responsibility and transparency. Tell me where we're going to come up with the money that's cut. We're already in deficit spending. We're now going to add more money. We're going to add the repairs. We're going to take the money and the repairs are not going to come in at cost. I'm sorry, by their own admission, they've said we've left things out of the bid. So, so where is this money going to come from? That's my question. I mean, we can deny it. We need to be realistic, realistic on what's going on around us.
Mr. Mason, or Dr. Mason, in all the years I've been on the board, the school funding has always been uncertain. Every year, we never know what the budget's going to be. It's always been up and down. The further out we get on the five-year forecast, we are always in deficit spending. And amazingly enough, we have operated within that budget year after year and managed. And we know that the further out we get on the budget, um, we, uh, we are more aggressive with reporting the expenses and less aggressive on the income. And I do understand your point that these are uncertain times and we don't know. And if there's going to be cuts to the budget, then there has to be cuts to expenses. And we realize that, but the nexus money is here. It would pay for repairs. I think we'd be remiss to not fix our buildings. We've gone far too long without fixing up our buildings. And we've heard many of our staff members tell us month after month at board meetings, the roofs are leaking and many things need fixed and the time is now to fix these buildings.
Buildings that we're in, correct. Not taking on additional costs when we don't need the building. This is not hard to understand and it's not that you don't understand. It is an inflexibility to deal with truth and it is irresponsible, period. I know that makes you smile, I see, but it's the truth.
Are there any other financial questions? Katie, I thought you were going to give us a report on the actual cost tonight. I thought that's what you were going to have ready for us. Are we going to get there or not?
Wild and crazy, so I never got a chance to get there. Are we ready for me to move on?
I don't know.
I have a question.
Said your report was going to be.
Yeah, I'm ready. I mean, if anybody else, I'm ready. I've got more. You can believe it. Are we ready?
I just had one more question before you go forward specifically to Joe. Joe, what do we have as options for, for the online learning? We have the Duke's Digital Academy. Could you highlight some of that for everybody? And given what we're going through now, are we going to be able to look at options for potential homeschoolers to enroll in the district and be able to do homeschooling? And be enrolled through the district at the same time?
Well, let's, let's talk about the Duke's Digital Academy. We started it probably four or five years ago because we had a group of kids that just weren't traditional type of kids, eighth to three. So we offered that online school. And to be honest with you, it's kind of in response to what Mrs. Gabriel talked about earlier. We needed to keep those kids here and we needed to be in competition. So that Duke's Digital Academy was a great option for our kids for those ones that were struggling. Like I said, for the non-traditional kiddos. And it served us well. It really has. We've had.
What grades does that cover?
We do middle school and high school. We have had a few elementary kids because the curriculum is more, you've got to kind of work on your own. You know, you, you, you get some guidance, you get some help from the teacher, but eventually the goal is you work at your own, at your own pace. And for elementary kiddos, that's a little much to ask. But we've had, I think, two in my time where we've allowed them to do it with some, you know, significant reports around them. But they've been successful. A 612 initiative.
As far as the state funding, do we get the same funding for those students as we do with the ones that are in school?
Yeah, they are a traditional Marlington kids still. Yes.
Okay, so we have that option for people that have become comfortable with this current situation so that they can still enroll in Marlington if that's their preference. Or even reach out to people that do homeschool to give them the option as well.
Yeah, and to be honest with you, I've reached out to our homeschoolers over the years and a couple of them are my neighbors and they are awesome people. And they say, you know what, Mr. Noel, we love Marlington. We love you. We love what you're doing. We just want to educate ourselves with a Christ-based philosophy at home. And at the end of the day, I'm fine with that. And whatever resources we can give to those parents to help educate those kids, we are more than willing to do because they're still our resident kids. I mean, at the end of the day, like I said, some of them are my neighbors and best friends with my wife. And, you know, we support them in everything they do. But they always have the option of being connected. As you know, they can come and participate and enter extracurricular activities here at the district. And some choose to do that as well.
And is the Digital Academy pretty similar to the current setup with all the students right now? Or how does that differentiate from what we're doing now?
It has its own curriculum that we work with, so it's a lot different than the remote learning that we're doing now. Curriculum line.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
All right. Ready for a little more great financial information?
Yeah.
There's more.
There's, but wait, there's more.
Okay.
So, um, we were talking about, talking to Mrs. Gabriel earlier this week about the Marlboro piece. And wanted to have a chance to discuss the actual, well, they won't be actual. It won't be actual until we get a little closer to the actual time when we need to hire these people. But I think that's really what we need to be focusing on is what are these people going to cost? Because at the end of the day, that's what's going to matter.
Do you have, do you have those figures you can give us or not?
Well, let's start by talking about positions. Joe and I have spent some time, you know, since I've been here, discussing it a little bit as time has gone on. And so I decided, we decided to put together a list of, you know, what we thought was, what it was going to look like so we could start talking about it with you. And so Joe and I are going to kind of tag team this discussion and. So, I don't know, you just want me to start rattling them off or how do we want to do this, Joe?
No, that's fine. Yeah.
So on the list, Joe has expressed what he thinks the building needs and he, we're, I'll just start naming them. We got a principal, a building secretary, clerical aide, custodian, head cook, cafeteria worker, tech assistant, playground aide, two latchkey, funder, and halftime music teacher. And then there's two unknown pieces, we're just, well, particularly unknown pieces. And that'll be if there will be any new teachers needed. And intervention specialists, which are likely, but again, we're just not going to know. And so we actually get through enrollment.
So if our enrollment continues at the same level that it is, we wouldn't just be reallocating teachers appropriately and staff? And are we looking at possibly sharing a principal or maybe hiring an assistant principal instead of a full-priced principal? An option?
Yeah, we always look at reallocating our teaching staff. That's always what we look to do. The issues are going to be depending on where the kids end up for their IEP services. That's where it gets a little tricky, like I mentioned in the past. That's where the intervention specialist teachers come in. So depending on what kiddos land and at what grade levels is going to determine what intervention specialist supports that we're going to need. So obviously the whole thing, you can take one from Lexington and Washington, bring them over and everything's going to be fine. But we won't know that until we get the kiddos in different places. As far as administration goes, I am in no way, shape or form in favor of not having a building principal in there in Marlboro, whether you have 50 kids or 500, in my opinion. You, for the safety and security of our kids and community, that is a mandatory given. And I think the other piece is some folks don't know what we ask our principals to do. It's more than just being a person that's in charge of discipline. I use the term instructional leader. And if you have your device there, you can Google that to actually take a look at what's involved there. But that's huge to me. And with all the different things our folks are doing when it comes to PBIS and care teams and working with our kids in the building, that's a significant position to me. Safety and security being number one, obviously. Can't put a, you know, anything more important than that. But the instructional leader piece as well is critical to what those guys and gals do in the building. So that's how.
What's the cost on that? I didn't hear the cost that you put on that. What's the least amount of cost and the most cost that it's going to be?
Okay, well, the way I've kind of figured it, I mean, this is a major estimate and by no way do we want to nail, because every time I say a number, people take it so literally. It drives me crazy. So the way I've kind of looked at this is I took the salary schedule. I pulled the lowest number off the salary schedule in the negotiated agreement. So we're looking at the lowest value possible. Now, Joe and I were talking and realistically, people are probably going to be hired in just a little bit higher than that. But we wanted to just go with the lowest value because it's just easier to relate to that and figure that out. So that's the salaries figured on. And then the benefits, I assume one premium holiday simply because that's.
Just, what's the total, just give us a total estimate would be fine.
Spare you all the details. When you factor in all those people, I've come up with about just over $4,000.
Okay, so the cost varied dramatically when we moved them out. It started out at a $650,000 or $700,000 savings and then it dwindled down to maybe closer to 200 or 250. And we didn't take into account any cost increase by the students moving out to the other schools and having increased costs there. So if we just reversed it, why are we getting a larger figure?
Well, the way I understood it and how this was all figured was the positions eliminated, the people that actually were eliminated. Well, the way I understood it and how this was all figured was the positions eliminated, the people that actually were eliminated. Um, so say, let's think who, who we, uh, Joe, who was the position that we, that was eliminated in all this? That we can use.
You mean like a custodian, you mean?
Okay, so yeah, say, say the custodian over there position was eliminated. And so because of the union, you have um, you know, so-and-so bumped so-and-so, so-and-so bumped so-and-so. And then the last man out is the actual savings. So those people, their savings, all add up and that's what actually gets reported as the savings. So I mean, that's what the end result really truly is. And I, I'm, and that's what it, in personnel, that's like three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars if I remember correctly what that figure was when I saw that report.
Okay, thank you. Um. Why don't we go ahead? Um, do you have any other financial pieces to add or?
Um, okay.
Could you send us that? Do we have that report in our Dropbox?
No, um, I mean, it's, it's such a fair estimate on, you know, but based on positions and, I mean, it's, it's like the forecast is gonna change. So I was reluctant to really.
So you don't think that there's custodians and cooks at the other schools? That if you move students over to Marlboro, that those would move over?
No, that, that's exactly what will happen. Yeah, there is a custodian at Lexington that will move back to Marlboro. But that's one. And we've always, we've had two custodians. That's why we would need to rehire the other one. Cafeteria ladies will move over as well. Um, and some teachers will move over as well that we didn't put on that list. So basically, we're gonna put the same players in place that we had position-wise. Moving in there next year as we did last year when we left. Um, that's our goal going into it. And then it'll be determined based on how many kiddos are actually in there for some of the spots. That's why it's hard for the treasurer to give you some specifics. And we don't really know how many kiddos are gonna end up landing in there.
Now, my concern would be when, and this is just me thinking out loud, because I mean, we, we don't know how this is gonna end. We're just struggling to try and get, you know, the best data we can. Is it.
I mean, that's the way it is all the time. We have to, you know, try to get the best data that we can. I agree.
Yeah, um, so, and Joe, you might have to help me explain this. Um, say you have thirty kids at one building and then you, you move five over to Marlboro, you know, you know what I'm saying with this? Move a small amount over to Marlboro and it leaves an odd number. Or no, no, no. Sorry, I'm explaining that wrong. Say you have forty kids in a grade level and you move five over. I'm, I'm not saying that's what's gonna happen, but I'm just trying to illustrate it in my head. You move five over to Marlboro and you end up with thirty-five. That's too many to have just one teacher. So you end up having to hire another teacher over here.
Yes.
Another thing we need to like keep in our minds that we're not creating another situation where we have to hire a teacher over here too. Because that's gonna create more expense too. So that was my other concern. I want to make sure that we're not creating issues.
And we've had a rise in the past. I mean, we've, we've had to hire like an extra second grade teacher maybe at Lexington. Because we had class sizes that we believed were too big. I mean, that, and, and that happens. Try not to have it happen a lot, but every now and then it does.
Katie, you mentioned the savings was three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. Is that the number I heard? Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe on that report, savings related to personnel was around three hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Gabriel said two hundred and fifty thousand, so.
I'm hearing all sorts of numbers being thrown out from there.
The two fifty was in the uh November forecast is what um, when Mr. Jones, um, the last forecast that Mr. Jones did, it was um approximately two hundred and fifty thousand.
For the whole year?
For the Marlboro savings is what uh we were told was the savings.
Okay, yeah, I, I remember.
So it's been all over the board and that's why it's a little bit hard to uh discuss it because it, that number is ever-changing.
But I think Tammy did a nice job before she left of putting that document together that outlined the three sixty-five that treasurer's talking about. Plus twenty-five or thirty thousand in utilities and things.
I agree. That's a nice document because it relates actual personnel and we have something that we can actually break down in the detail and.
Right.
Verify.
Yeah, those aren't projections. Those are actual savings from this year, which is the difference. You're not looking in a crystal ball. You're saying, here's what we saved this year by not having that building up and running. So that's to the treasury point.
Okay, uh, can we move on with the facilities update and then we can circle back with the financial questions? Um, once uh we hear the facilities update, if we have further questions on the finances. If uh Mr. Litwin is still out there.
Yeah, I'm still here.
Sorry, sorry.
No problem. Um, yeah, so as far as an update, last week at the board meeting, uh, the district had requested that we look into, uh, do a deeper dive on two specific scopes of work. One being uh getting more details on roofs and more options with the roofs, as well as taking a look at the abatement. And before I pass over to Jared, I want to check, did everybody get the uh document that I sent over to, to Joe uh earlier today?
Nope, I don't, I didn't forward that out, Will. I'm sorry.
Nope, it's all right. I uh, I can send it out now if that works for everybody.
I apologize, bud. I didn't see that.
No, no problem.
Hey, Will, um, if you have that document on your computer, you uh, you should have an option to present that straight from your computer as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me, I just sent it out for everyone's reference too. And then what I'll do is I'll get all my other windows and tabs and everything closed. All right, let me see.
No pressure. You're on live TV. You're all right.
Yeah, there you go. Hit present now, Ben?
Yep, that's it.
Let me try that. Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
All right. With this uh, yeah, first of all, before I hand it over to Jared too, what I want to say is we, we received nine bids from four different roofing partners that we reached out to. Um, all four of them, I think we, just so you guys know which ones we reached out to, it was Tremco, it was Garland, it was Duralast, and it was Firestone. All four are top-notch companies. Uh, I would say that the district cannot go wrong with any one of the four. Uh, we were very, very much appreciative of uh all four of them expediting, getting this analysis done uh as quickly as they did. So I just wanted to kind of note that for everyone. And with that, I'll hand it over to Jared to walk you through the, the sheet and what our findings were over the past week.
Thank you, Will. Yeah, so as Will said, uh, we were able to get a total of nine roofing bids across four manufacturers. Um, we worked to kind of divide these up across three categories. Um, you'll see the value, the intermediate, and then the premium buckets, if you will, at the top of the page there. And these uh buckets were driven mainly on warranty. Um, so value being anywhere between a twenty and twenty-five, intermediate being a twenty-five, and then the premium option being a thirty-year warranty. Um, so we've provided some of the more technical details here at the top of the table for each of the options. Um, a description of the layers, the thickness of the layers, um, the R-value, which would be the insulative value, uh, how much insulation you're gonna get. Code is R twenty-five. All these options are R twenty-five with the exception of the one R thirty option. Um, I know last week in the meeting, uh, there was discussions around mechanically fastened versus adhered. And so we've shown the fastening type for each of the uh, the nine options. Um, where the material for the roofing is sourced. Um, our biggest concern there was with the COVID nineteen, perhaps having some delays if it's uh sourced overseas. Um, you can see here, all nine are domestically sourced. And so we don't anticipate that being a problem. Um, where I'd like to spend a little bit more time is on the asbestos abatement, which is the next couple of sections. Um, so just to kind of recap from last week, um, you've got a mix of both uh concrete deck and metal deck. Um, and then you've got a coal tar roof above those with spray foam on top of that. Um, on your metal deck sections, you've got perlite insulation between the deck and the coal tar. And there is a concern that if that has gotten wet, that it is compromised. And so all the uh manufacturers that we reached out to believe that on the metal decking, um, there should be uh a removal down to the deck and abatement therefore would be required. And so that sixty-two percent abatement uh represents the abatement needed for the, the metal deck section. Um, on the value and intermediate options, they are all of the opinion that if the district wanted to, you could leave the coal tar on the concrete roofing portions, uh, which would represent about thirty-eight percent of the roof at Marlboro. Um, and then essentially that, that coal tar on the concrete, because it's essentially mopped on, acts as a, uh, another vapor barrier. And so because there's no perlite insulation under that between it and the deck, uh, they, again, don't see any issue with leaving that. Now, we have provided you with a pricing um to uh, to not only abate that, but uh to, to abate what's over the metal as well. So um, the next kind of row down for a hundred percent abatement, for each of the value and intermediate options, you would need to add fifty-two thousand to the budget min and max that we showed down further below. Um, so you, again, the budget min and max would be to abate only the metal roof section. If you did want to go ahead and abate and go clear to the deck on the concrete deck sections, you could add the fifty-two grand. Um, and then we have provided where uh these different roof sections have been installed. So those would be references. Uh, if you wanted to talk to other folks that have uh put these types of roofs on their buildings. Um, again, the budget min and max would be um with the abatement for the metal deck. And then if the district decided to fully abate and go to the, the deck on the concrete portion as well, we've provided the fully abated min and max below that. The other thing I would like to point out is uh through this exercise, um, we've been able to free up about seventy thousand dollars. Uh, in terms of where the numbers we presented last week and where we're at now. That has covered almost half of the roof abatement, uh, just in that what we'll call buyout savings by running this uh bid for Marlboro alone. So um, just starts to show the value and uh, you know, bringing multiple parties to the uh, to the dance, if you will, and, and some of the value we can create.
Do you have a recommendation on which one you might recommend?
Yeah, so we've, we've worked with every manufacturer that's represented it on the list. Um, again, as Will said, they're all very reputable companies. Uh, we would consider them all to be top tier and that's why we invited them. Um, I think it would really depend if you guys wanted a single layer or a two-layer. Um, if you were fine with a single-layer system, we think there's a lot of value in option two under the value option. Um, so the, the five fifty-three to six twenty, uh, the middle option there. So that would be a single-layer, uh, R twenty-five, fully adhered, twenty-five-year warranty. Um, and then it would kind of be up to you guys on how you wanted to do the abatement for the concrete portion. So if you did want to include that, then that would be an additional fifty-two grand on top of that. Um, if you did, if you, if, if you were adamant about a, a multi-layer system, then the intermediate option two or the premium option one um, would be two, two uh ones that we would recommend for that.
Is there, is there any benefit uh to leaving versus removing the uh coal tar layer? And does that function as a fire retardant as well? And is that something we'll have to deal with if we remove it?
So yeah, we don't see uh, unless you're, for whatever reason, you're just really wanting to get rid of asbestos in the building, uh, we don't see any reason to, to spend the extra money to remove it. Um, again, it does act as another vapor barrier. Um, it would have some insulative properties as well. Um, and, and frankly, it's, it would be a lot of labor because of how it's applied to that concrete deck to, to remove it. Um, so yeah, our recommendation would be unless you're, again, adamant about getting rid of uh the asbestos, would be that you would be fine to leave it. Um, I guess the other thing to say that um, the options that we recommend actually encapsulate that layer as well. Um, so elastocell is a lightweight concrete material that would be applied on top of the um, that layer. Um, you know, above the coal tar but under the, the new roofing. Um, that again would encapsulate all of the asbestos so that you, you don't have a, a concern further down the road.
And as far as asbestos and the coal tar on the roof, that doesn't generally pose any, you know, risk to the people in the building or even outside the building. Like you said, it's, it's encapsulated. Um, the only thing I could imagine would be water seeping through. I would find it difficult to believe that if there was a leak, that the asbestos would go through the substrate and the ceiling and down into the building. Am I correct?
Yes, I would agree with that. Yeah, again, that coal tar is basically, um, yeah, I, it's a, you know, another vapor layer, layer. Um, it is a very, I mean, it's tar essentially, right? So I think it would be very hard for uh moisture to get down through that, through the concrete and into the building. I would agree with that.
So last week I had heard that four ply was mentioned. Um, is there any need for a four ply roof? I don't see any listed here.
Um, so yeah.
I, I think multi ply was referenced.
That was the term that I used, the multi ply, um, well, here.
Yeah, which, which I think would kind of reference any of those two layers or even the two-layer plus gravel option that you see in the premium.
Okay, thank you.
Just a quick question I have. Since, since you said that you thought coal tar and the concrete are enough to keep the water away, why does the roof leak then?
Jared, do you want to answer that or?
Yeah, I don't know where exactly you're experiencing roof leaks, but I would suspect that they are uh on the metal deck sections where you've got the perlite uh in between the um, the metal deck and the uh, the coal tar itself.
Was that on the newer addition or the older part of the building?
Uh, actually, it was part of the newer addition and then I want to say the gym area of Marlboro. But admittedly, I went to all three, so sometimes I'm getting all three mixed up in my head.
Actually, we.
I will say that uh, to, to answer the question though, I was there the day we did the core samplings. And a lot of the metal roof sections in particular were wet when we did the core drilling. Um, that water had already gotten through, but we did not see that a lot on the concrete deck sections.
Will, could you go over um, the timeframe of when decisions should be made and that sort of thing for moving forward?
Yeah, um, you know, as we kind of touched on last week, I think we had mentioned our goal was, you know, the end of the month, which we knew was a tighter timeframe. Uh, you guys had moved forward with the letter of, of intent, allowing us to get started doing some of the engineering, doing some of this, even these steps. Um, to be honest, the sooner the better. Um, I know that uh, you know, you and the district have a decision to make. But ultimately, when it comes to doing projects like this, obviously, the more time we have, it allows us to drive a better value on the competitive bid market. Allows us to coordinate, schedule the work, the subcontract labor, uh, and the material providers, to everything work in sync to allow us to achieve uh the goal of having the building open by the start of school. Um, I will say we had our, our engineering team reach out this week and get updates on lead times uh for, from a variety of manufacturers that are out there on the HVAC side, seeing as that's kind of one of the more critical path items. Um, the good news is all of them have verified that they are not seeing slowdowns yet. The good news is, all of them have verified that they are not seeing slowdowns yet, and that we're not anticipating any issues or any shutdowns from what they're doing. Feedback we got is a few said that they've been mandated to prioritize hospitals and hospital equipment naturally, that they are to be bumped to the front of the line, but did not anticipate that really slowing down anything from the perspective of the project.
So Will, this is including now the asbestos part of the roof. Are there any other things that you see coming down the line that could be a hiccup along the way? Critical, structural on the roof? Are there things that, you know, if I get my roof done, the roofer's always going to tell me, well, I can't give you a final price because I don't know what the decking's going to look like when I get it off. Do I have to replace all the plywood on the roof as well?
Right. Yeah, that's a good question. I would say that it's possible you might have, because obviously, we can't see the decking completely. But being a concrete deck and a metal deck, I would not anticipate a lot there based on the age of your buildings versus other roof sections we've done. So I wouldn't anticipate a large cost overrun, if any. And then as far as abatement goes, you know, additional costs, I know we did talk about that last week. I didn't want to kind of blend that with the roofs, but we do have other abatement costs on the sheet across that bottom sheet there. We counted up number of roof penetrations, number of wall penetrations, and first floor penetrations. I had a chance to speak to Bill Racine. He actually called me this afternoon, and we talked through both the mechanical systems, how they would anticipate being mounted, you know, what areas of the buildings we know have asbestos and what don't. We kind of tried to break it out there for you, again, whether you did roof-mounted condensing units or ground-mounted condensing units. And then to your point also, Scott, if we did roof-mounted, any budgeting or beefing up of the roof structure that may be needed to support the condensing units is inclusive in our pricing. And then obviously, like I said, if some of that is not needed, it would be part of buyout savings for the district.
What kind of price reduction on that installation are we looking at for the installing the units on the ground as well? This just shows the cost for the abatement, correct?
Yes, yeah, we have not factored in full pricing yet because that'd be, it'd be hard to know until we actually start securing the subcontract labor and the material providers.
I mean, is there, is there any ballpark figure, like a range? I mean, maybe out there, just to give us an idea.
I mean, I could defer to Jared or Dan. I mean, one of the things I can think of is, we wouldn't need a crane, obviously, to be able to get that up on the roof. But Jared or Dan, would you guys have an answer that makes sense?
And would we be looking at one unit in the front of the building and one in the back going with that route?
I wouldn't anticipate a huge savings there.
Right, I was going to say the same thing.
What about, what about for the maintenance costs over the lifetime of the equipment? Or would that be significant?
Right, my opinion there is it would be, it would be cheaper for them to be on the ground, but I don't think your typical commercial mechanical contractor is going to, you know, have a huge increase if they're on the roof. But there could be some savings there. But yeah, in terms of, you know, the budget, I agree with Dan. I don't think there's a huge difference between doing it ground or roof in terms of the install cost.
Maybe a couple grand, maybe five grand, maybe.
Thank you.
And I did want to, I guess, build too on the bottom table there on the page that Will was touching on, in terms of some of the abatement costs. Those are worst case, and that we assume that you guys would do the cooling for the gymnasiums. So you see on the ground-mounted condensing units off to the right there, there are still some roof penetrations shown for Lexington and Marlboro. Those would be for those gym air handling units where we would look to add cooling. And so if you decided that that wasn't needed, those could obviously be removed. So from that standpoint, we did assume worst case in that you would do cooling. Yeah, and so those costs could go away if that's the path that's not chosen.
Well, you had spoken briefly about economies of scale if we had committed to all three buildings at once. Are you able to speak to what that cost savings would be if we committed to all three?
Yeah, we've done a variety of projects, and Dave, our president on here, I think might be able to probably answer that better than I could, or even our engineering team on the project management side. Dave, I'll defer to you on what your experience has been, but...
I would say anywhere between 2% and 5%.
Okay, thank you.
Assuming you or the district allows us to maybe team up with different mechanical, electrical contractors and roofing partners potentially, we would want to slice and dice and look at the scope through multiple lenses, but there would most definitely be cost savings there.
If we were able to move forward with a letter of intent with Washington and Lexington, would we be able to do that pending receipt of our funds? Or how would that work?
Yeah, if that was something you guys wanted to move forward with, would kind of be very similar to what we did with Marlboro, where we could at least start doing some of the engineering and actually having a letter of intent in hand when we go and start reaching out. You know, let's say you guys decided to move forward to Marlboro, as we're engaging contractors, both roofing, mechanical, all the different trades. We'd be able to talk to them about the future plans for the district, and obviously, people getting this first project may have a leg up on the second and third project, and certainly hopefully be able to take advantage of some economies of scale with that regard, kind of talking about the different systems.
Even if the projects are years apart?
Yeah, one of the things we even talked about, I think worked out in our favor even with the roofing, you know, we kind of mentioned it very clearly to most of the roofers, that in all likelihood, manufacturer that was selected for the first roof would get the second and the third roof or have at least a leg up as an opportunity to get the second and the third roof. So I think it certainly makes them a little more aggressive. Again, it kind of lets you take advantage of the economies of scale, even though they know that those are going to be spread out potentially over a two- to three-year span.
I'd also add that in this environment, there are a lot of hungry mechanical, electrical contractors and roofers. They've seen a lot of projects go sideways. I think this could be a perfect storm.
I think we spoke last meeting that it would make the most sense for us to structure this over a three-year period to, you know, to take advantage of the availability of the NEXUS funds. Is that something that would work with the letter of intent and waiting for those funds to come in then?
Yeah, yeah, I think it would. You know, naturally, the only thing you might run into is some minor changes that would be on the material side, if there were price increases from mechanical contractors, from roofers. Again, one of the things I think we would seek to do would be to try and get some price fixing if possible when we're running our RFPs, to try and kind of guard against that if you guys did decide to move forward, knowing it is over two to three years. But, but yeah, I would expect that to be pretty minimal.
We, I think we would also give you multiple scenarios. We would have the subcontractors price up a school a year for the next three years, and then we would run every other combination you could think of between three schools and three years, and see what kind of price protection or escalation they would anticipate. So you could have almost a, like a facility master plan view, based on which route you guys decide to go. But we could lay that all out for you in a matrix to show you what those options look
Does anyone else have further questions on the facilities? Do you have the overall estimate with this revision in for the roof? The range of what it would be?
For, for which option? For, for like the one, like value option two or?
Option two. What's that one look like?
Budget option two. Yeah, Jared, do you have that number?
Yeah, would you want me to run it with full abatement or just the budget max?
If you did it leaving the coal tar over the concrete deck, what does that one look like?
All right, so full abatement, and then I'm also adding in the three grand for Marlboro for the penetrations for the...
Jared, sorry to cut in. I think they didn't say full abatement, they said budget.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, leaving the coal tar over the concrete, is that, is that correct, Josh?
Yes, sorry, I had it on me. Yeah, that's correct.
And that again includes the penetrations for the VRF as well for Marlboro for the abatement.
Will, that 1.7 number includes what? Just to make sure I'm clear on that. That's the roof?
Yes. That number is, so that would be the full VRF, the LED lighting for Marlboro, the intermediate option two roof option.
Jared, Jared, I think it was a value option two. Is that correct?
Okay, very good.
No, you might get the wrong one.
I think it's closer to 1.61 million, Jared.
Yeah, if you use the intermediate option two, I think, yeah, that's too high. It's the value option two, the 620.
I'm sorry, okay, yeah, they're cutting out a little bit. I apologize for that. So that number is 1.594.
That's understandable.
Okay, so 1.5 million now is the roof, and that's value option two?
1.59 would be, would be lighting, the HVAC, windows, and roof option two. And then is that air conditioning in the gyms as well, Jared? Or is that?
It is, yes, it is.
Okay.
But that's the only thing except for the windows and door upgrades.
It does include the windows and doors as well.
It does, okay.
And that's value option, option two, correct?
Right.
Correct. Okay.
It's just the value option for the roof. Everything else is the same as far as the windows, doors, light, LED lighting, full VRF in the gym, AC.
Correct.
On the roof.
You are correct, yep.
And that's the max, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So just, just to be clear, this... Go ahead, Josh.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. Okay, well, just to be clear, that doesn't include any electrical upgrades, that doesn't include asbestos anywhere but the roof, that doesn't include drainage issues, foundation issues, doesn't include any kind of handicap accessibility problems, doesn't include any upgrades to technology, infrastructure, doesn't include the wastewater plant.
I don't think we need the waste, we're talking Marlboro, right? I don't think we need the wastewater treatment plant at Marlboro. I thought that was already updated.
Everything else.
Pardon me?
Well, take that one away, and I'm asking about everything else.
So it includes abatement for the penetrations, but I would say that that is correct. As far as the, you know, foundation stuff like that, what we were looking at was, was obviously more energy infrastructure.
No, I thought you said last time that Marlboro wouldn't need the electrical upgrade, that what we had would be sufficient.
So serviced upgrade, correct. You would not need a service upgrade at Marlboro? I'm guessing, and Scott, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, are you asking about like rewiring the whole building?
Yes, I'm asking a little bit about how the upgrades would be made anytime you would redo a building.
Right, Jared, Jared, that electrical service upgrade is fine at Marlboro. Well, I can't remember which school required the service upgrade.
I think it was Lexington.
Lexington is correct, yep.
Yeah. The electrical infrastructure is just fine to support this VRF system at Marlboro. There's no, there's no necessary retrofit at this particular elementary. But we're not doing foundation work during each work, some of the other things on your list as part of the scope of work.
And as far as doing repairs and updates, are we required to become ADA compliant?
No, I sent you guys the information quite a couple weeks ago from the county building inspector that reviewed that. That was not a requirement.
And technology, what is needed there that we don't have technology-wise?
I can speak to that a little bit. That building, a lot of the technology was dispersed to the other building, so we really would need to take inventory of what would be needed. Basically, we'd be starting over in that building.
Why would, why would we need to start over?
We took a lot of, we took all of the portable equipment out of that building and dispersed it to the other buildings so we could capitalize on that, on the technology that was housed originally at Marlboro, inclusive of wall-mounted smart boards and other things.
And so can some of that come back since it wouldn't be needed at the other buildings?
It would follow the student need, yes. Some of it, we would just need to purchase new equipment. And we also have an E-rate grant that, that can cover some of the infrastructure needs
I think Carol is having some connectivity issues here. She hasn't dropped off yet, but her audio and video seems to be dropped now. Are you back, Carol?
I thought I was back. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you now. Yeah, we, we lost most everything that you said about technology there.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Most of the technology would be starting from scratch because the building technology that was, or the technology that was in that building prior to closure, we dispersed it all to other buildings. Some technology would follow the students, but we would need to start from scratch with a lot. And then that infrastructure, we have an E-rate grant that will upgrade some of our technology infrastructure. We have a couple hiccups with the reopening of Marlboro that we're still trying to navigate Did I make it through that time?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
There's further discussion on the facilities, does anyone have anything more to provide on any of this?
Um, sorry, I was cutting out there a little bit, but I, I think you were asking if there was any more to provide on Marlboro.
Right.
I think that was pretty much what we wanted to present to you guys, what we spent the last week doing and again, thank all the different roofing contractors as they really jumped through hoops to make sure that we had this data back to you. And, yeah, I think that about closes it up.
Thank you, well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So can you give us, um, if, uh, okay, so the decisions that would need to be made is we need to commit to the project, if that's the route we're gonna go, is that correct?
Yeah, I would say if, if you were wanting to do the project in Marlboro over the summer, you know, as I mentioned earlier, the sooner we can start, the better, if that's, if that's the route that the district decides to go in.
Okay.
Well, what's the, what's the maximum amount that that, this project can cost?
Uh, Jared, was that 1.59 million?
Is that, that, that's the maximum?
1.594.
1.59, okay, I just-
Right. Right, and that's, that's, that's a guaranteed maximum price.
Okay.
So if we whiff on any kind of scope or any kind of change order, internal change order, it comes out of our pocket, not, not the district's pocket. And we put that in our contract.
Okay.
And that's not, you know, that's our maximum price, there could, it could be significantly less too. But that's, that's what we need the budget off of, just like the next one.
Right. Correct.
And that's where the, the duration of the work would take place again?
Through fall.
Through fall.
Is the board okay with that roof option under the value options versus getting a multi-layered layer on, on that roof?
Now, wasn't that a 25-year warranty on the, on the value option two?
Yeah, that's the adhered option as well. Is that a single layer of R25 versus two layers, is that it?
Yeah, I think, Joe, you're comparing value option two versus intermediate option two?
Yeah, yeah, I was looking at, because you, you had mentioned, I think, intermediate option two, I think is maybe your other option there.
Yeah, yeah, we kind of mentioned if the district was gonna go with a multi-layer, that that one was a good value. Yeah, and Jared, I don't know if you wanna-
We can go either way.
Yeah, I mean, really, it's whatever, yeah, whatever the preference is of the district.
Yeah, the difference is just the, the two layers and then you do get a little bit more R-value on option two intermediate. But otherwise, yeah, there's the two main, two main differences between that and the value option two.
What's the increasing cost of intermediate option two over value option two?
Alright, bear with me. Are you gonna look at the fully abated number, Jared, or are you gonna, you just go look at the budget number?
And as, and as far as those two options, I mean, what are we looking at for, you know, energy savings, cost savings for the difference in cost between the two options? I mean, are we looking at like a 50, 60-year payback or more? Going, you know, having that $130,000 difference in the max prices between those two, or is that not 130, that's 110, right? Well, that's a minimum. The maximum was 131,000, about 132,000 more.
Yeah. Yeah, 131,916 is the difference between the budget max, intermediate option two and value option two.
And as far as energy savings and, you know, efficiency, cost savings using intermediate option two versus value option two, what are we looking at for payback on that? I mean, we have the same warranty on the two, I just wanna know if it's got a value to the extra cost that it's gonna make it worth doing that option versus the value option.
Jared, I have a gut feel on that, but you, you're the energy engineer, you can tackle that one. What's the, for 131 grand, what's the payback on a increase in five, R-value of five?
I, yeah, I was gonna try and, I can try and crunch that number, I don't have it readily available, wouldn't take me long, but my gut feel is, uh, yeah, because you're already at R25, that incremental from R25 to R30 is not gonna pay for itself very quickly.
But is that two layers of R30 or is that total R30 value?
Total R30, the two layers is just the membrane on the, on the top above the insulation.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, the insulation's actually the same on both those options, it's just you get a little bit more R-value out of the actual two-ply membrane instead of the single ply.
Yeah, I guess the question is, is that, is that second layer worth 130,000?
I think the payback would be between, would probably be between 20 and 30 years on that incremental investment.
As a point of reference, the savings that we identified, just going to R25, was $2,000 utility savings. So, you know, we'll pick up a few hundred extra dollars maybe going from R25 to R30, so that gives you an idea of what that. I certainly wouldn't make the decision on the energy savings from R25 to R30, I think it would be more on, you know, what gives the district peace of mind relative to two layers versus one.
Right.
Um, again, both, both have a 25-year warranty.
How would that give us more peace of mind, could you? You said they're both 25-year warranty, right?
Right, that's true, yeah, the warranty is the same, just having that extra layer on the top membrane, if that's important.
Is, is Durlass the only vendor that does the single?
They are not.
Okay, so all, all, all of those vendors will do a single, single layer?
Right.
Okay.
Are there any additional questions? Is there any more discussion on whether to move forward or whether to wait, is there any opinions on the decisions on that, or the thoughts on that?
I'll say it again, I clearly believe that we need to just wait.
I concur with Mrs. Humphries, we're, we're in too much unknown territory here. Or we'd be irresponsible financially for the school district.
I feel that we already have the data that we need to make the wise decisions on making the repairs needed, so I, I, I don't think we should wait. I feel we should utilize the, the time that we have to make the repairs and make a better learning environment for our kids.
I think I've, I've heard enough enough information to make an informed, well.
Alright, then, um, is there, is there a motion to authorize the superintendent to amend the current contract with PlugSmart to add the scope of work as presented for Marlboro Elementary to commence immediately?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ms. Gabriel, can we mention the, in the resolution, just for the sake of my record keeping and all that, the, the amount that we're committing to? I think that would help, I, a lot of times when we refer back to large construction projects, sorry to-
You want the projects to specify?
Can we, can we make it a little bit more specific?
Let's do that.
And-
That's a good idea.
Because whenever we're going through for record keeping and keeping all that straight, it helps to be able to tie it back to the board resolution and-
Okay. And a- Okay. Okay, so I'll restate the motion. Um, I move to authorize the superintendent to amend the current contract with PlugSmart to add the scope of work which was the roof, heating and air conditioning, windows, doors, lighting.
Yep.
Is that it? And that was-
The gym HVAC was the only other item I was gonna mention.
Okay, can-
And then, like, if we could mention the amount?
And, and for Marlboro Elementary at a maximum cost of 1.594 million.
Thank you, sorry.
To commence immediately. Is that the correct, that's correct?
Would it, would it?
So-
Would it be a consideration for us to put off on the windows and door upgrades at this time? To, to, you know, cut out a maximum of 191,000 at this time, I mean, that's something we could do later on down the road. Just to allow a little more money in the budget.
Give us a little cushion.
We, we haven't AC'd our other gyms either, I'm sure you guys know that, but we don't have air conditioning in any of them.
I, I would, I would suppose that wouldn't be something we'd use all the time, Joe, is that something that we'd probably look at using during presentations? I mean, it's kind of a natural thing to sweat in gym class when you're running around and it's warm. At least in my mind, I mean, I know it can affect kids' concentration when they're in the classroom, but as far as playing sports, for me, that's part of it, so I, I look, I look at, that's gonna be something that we're probably looking at using more for, for events as far as the air conditioning portion of that goes.
So am I hearing that we should remove the windows and doors or that is something we can work out with PlugSmart that we postpone that portion to a future year?
Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to, to, you know, take that off there, just to add a little more cushion to the district for financing. And then just commit to the other three, the full VRF, the gym AC and the roof upgrades. And then we'll see how those projects go and, you know, it'll give us a little more play to make sure we're on budget with the future projects of the other two elementaries as well because I do believe that Marlboro is one of the least expensive and the other ones are gonna be more, so we're gonna have to have, have to balance some of the projects out so we can try to, try to move forward on all three elementaries for some of the main stuff and then come back around and, you know, do the smaller things afterwards. At least that, that's the way I think would, would make more sense.
Let's take it down to like 1.402 million, something like that.
Or, yeah, 1.0, 1.403100 is the exact amount without the windows and doors.
Feels a little more palatable, what do you guys all think?
And the Nexus money would be sufficient for that as well as fixing the the basement water issue that we have, correct?
Um, yeah, I think Joe was looking at doing a lot of those repairs in-house, I, we, we need to see what, what needs, that, what we can handle in-house and then get pricing on some of those items such as the the drain tile, that's the drain tile that needs repaired that's causing the backup in the basement, correct, Joe?
Correct, yeah.
Also, when I stopped out there, there's a stump pump down in the basement, but it lets out just right outside the wall there, so it's kind of dumping right up against the foundation and, you know, it's got nowhere to go on the blacktop, it's back to the one back down end and that, that's probably not very good for the foundation to have it recycling there.
When Hammond priced those out for us, that was more than $300,000 for those two pieces.
For drain tile repair?
For the, for the plumbing and drainage issuers and the foundation and wall issues. And that's from, when Hammond went around to the schools in 2019, they estimated those costs.
Do we, do we have this in our drop box, Scott, where I can look at it?
No, it's in, it's, it's in Building and Grounds, I think, in 2019, back when we had committees, it was in, it was in, I think, the Building and Grounds Committee's report, I can't remember when it's in there, but it's from 2019.
Yeah, it's, it's in another drop box too, Doc, that I had prepared for you probably a month or so ago.
Okay, so, Katie, do you want us to amend the motion or restate it one more time?
Just, let's just restate it one more time.
Okay. Alright. Um, is there a motion to authorize the superintendent to amend the current contract with PlugSmart to add the scope of work for Marlboro being the, the roof, lighting, HVAC, gym, gym AC, and what was, what was the other one? Pardon?
Were, was windows part of that or was that when, the windows and door?
The windows and doors we took off.
The, the windows are part of the door.
Just, just take the windows-
So the full VRF, HVAC, the, the lighting, the roof and the gymnasium AC.
At a cost of?
Maximum cost of 1.0 or 1.403
Three.
One million.
1.1.403100, is that right?
Correct.
For Marlboro Elementary.
That's correct.
Correct, that's correct.
How many people does it take to read a motion?
Yes. There, uh, do we need, do you have the first and second on that, now that we re-stated three times, or do you want another one?
I have Hagan and Stevens, is that? Are we?
Are we good? Hey, Josh? Are you making a motion?
We have to make a mo, we have to make a motion to, did, you made a motion-
We're just restating it, we wanna make sure you're okay with restating a motion.
Okay, you're restating, okay, so moved.
Second.
Alright.
And is there any further questions on this motion? I'm pleased to call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
No.
Dr. Mason?
No.
And Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved, free to.
And then, um, And then, um, is Will still there or did he leave?
I'm still here.
Okay, um, if we went forward with a letter of intent pending, pending the availability of funds, what would be our financial commitment for the? Knowing that we're probably one to two or maybe even three years down the road with that for Washington Lexington?
Yeah, and I'll, I spoke with our team about this earlier. But I would say if you guys did ever decide at any point to do an LOI for the other buildings, be very similar to what Marlboro was, Lexington being a little bit larger. Would carry a little higher range, but I'd say probably 10,000 for Washington and maybe 12,000 for Lexington.
And what, what would be, would there be benefit of doing that now or waiting for a month?
Completely up to the district. A lot of times when we procure material and when you're trying to get. Group pricing or getting expanded pricing and they want to see an LOI or a commitment. To be able to give you special pricing for higher quantities. So I would say it would help from that perspective. So. If it was something you guys were considering, I would say having it before we start going out to bid on all the other scopes of work would be the ideal time.
Would that? I mean, we have to wait for the excess money to come in. I mean, we don't have the excess funds to do the other two projects at this time. Um, if. Say if part of the money didn't come through and we had to postpone it further, how's that going to work with the whole? Project? I mean, is that something you can still work with?
Yeah, I would say.
Are you looking at six months, Carol, or are you looking at a year to float the next round?
Um, it's going to be.
Probably at least a year.
I'm going to say a minimum of a total of three to four years. Depending on how the excess money comes in.
No, you meant, I think you meant, did you mean till the next project?
Yeah.
It'd be another year, like next year for the next project.
So that would be July 2021?
Well, technically we'd be getting, uh. No, it'd be like February or March, we'd be getting more excess money.
Of this year or of 20, of 2021?
21, right.
That's right.
So that's, that's within six months of our Marlboro project being complete. So there could be some interesting things that we could do with our subs and partners on payment terms. Usually six months and within, if there's another phase, another sequence. There's been some strategies that we've used in the pace, in the past where we could bridge that gap. When we start pushing nine months, then us and some of the other trades that we work with would want to look at a short-term. Kind of lease to bridge a gap, but if you're within six months. It would be possible. And if we went through this LOI process and we started scoping out some of these other projects and then pulling them together and see what the economies are. Then we tell them, hey, there's, you know, there's two years worth of three schools. And, but, you know, one of the requirements is you've got to float five months for the next payment or tranche. I think we could probably get some people's attention on that. Potentially in this environment. It's interesting. If it were nine, 12 months, maybe not, but if it's stacked up that close, potentially.
And I guess I would just caution the board once again, we have other projects in those elementary buildings that need some attention and I would consider it immediate attention. Like I mentioned last meeting as well. So just keep that in mind. That's not part of Plug Smart's scope of work.
Did you say, did you say it's, it needs immediate attention?
Yeah.
And, and what was that, the?
The wastewater treatment plant in Lexington is number one on, on my target list. I really think.
Asbestos?
Waste water treatment plant.
Waste water treatment. Okay.
Is number one. Josh, asbestos would be number two, depending on the projects, you know, that kind of a thing. But I just, I just, I want to keep bringing that up. I know we're focused on growth and HVAC and that's all good stuff, but.
Yeah.
We, we need a little buffer for that wastewater treatment plant for sure.
What is, what is the current condition of the wastewater treatment plan in Lexington? Is it, is it failing tests?
No, it's, it's, it's limping along.
And, you know, is that? What's, what's the reasoning that it needs replaced sooner than later? Is it expected to fail? In the near future or?
Well, I don't, I don't know if it's expected to fail. I've, I've just been, after talking to our maintenance guys, they are just concerned that we haven't given that facility the attention that it needs. And.
I'm, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to wrap my head around what the reasoning is that it needs replaced if it's.
It's old.
If it's functional.
It's old and outdated.
But if it works, it works. I mean, is, is it requiring more and more frequent maintenance on a certain aspect of it?
It's requiring numerous, numerous pumpings during the week. It's not running as it should.
They, they haven't, someone come out and actually pump, you know, pump out the tank frequently?
That's my understanding, yep.
How often?
Um, I don't know that for a fact, but I'll find that out. But all I know is my maintenance guys keep telling me, we have got to keep that on the radar. Got to.
And is that exacerbated with more kids in school now?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure if we're pumping it more than we had last year or not. Like I said, I'll, I'll find that out.
Okay.
But I think it's limping along is probably a pretty good term.
I just want to touch base. I mean, when, Will, when we were talking last week, you said that the roof part of it, the worst roof was Lexington's roof, correct?
It was the one that had, it had some standing water on it. When we did a core sample and pulled the core out, there was actually water two to three inches deep sitting in the foam.
Okay. And in your opinion, a roof would be quite the good investment to make, being that that's protecting what's inside the building as well?
Um, I mean, obviously, you know, roofs, you know, if it has water in it, it would just be something to probably want to be looked at sooner than later. The good news at Lexington is it wasn't every section. Of Lexington, but it's, it's a couple of the sections had it.
Thank you, Will. I appreciate that.
So why aren't we fixing that one first?
Point. All right.
It's a worse case. Why wouldn't we fix it first?
Thomas, send.
Unless you have a myopic view that you're headed down one path and one path only. Clearly what we're doing here, so I won't even chime in anymore on this.
I think what I was saying earlier that.
Scott, I think you pointed out at one of the earlier meetings that we needed to do the repairs at Marlboro since it was closed.
So I said we should do repairs on a building that has no students assigned to it this year instead of. It makes more sense? If, if we have three buildings and one of them's empty, but it also makes sense if we have buildings which the roof is worse.
Okay, then why did we, but we closed the Marlboro Elementary School. If we're, if we're getting back to that, Dr. Wilson, I guess my, my concern is we, we closed Marlboro, which we all know. And then we shipped those kids to Lexington, which couldn't, you know, which obviously did need more repairs and things like that. But we're going, you know, as we're talking to Plug Smart, they're suggesting what we need to do to utilize the best plan for all three buildings. And right now there's no kids in Marlboro at this point, so it would make more sense to do that building so we can get a jumpstart on it before fall, seeing as it's already April.
Yeah, it makes perfect sense. We shouldn't fix the worst roof. We sent kids to Lexington because Lexington's the biggest school. Maybe if you look at that, Lexington holds more students than anywhere else. In fact, I believe Lexington was designed to hold 1,000 students originally. So that's why Lexington was chosen. Marlboro versus Washington was chosen.
Same.
On paces. So, so if you're asking those questions, that's how those decisions were made. Now, you're going to do what you want to do. Like I said, I'm just going to, I'm, I'm not going to say anymore. I don't. It's upon you. I wash my hands of this because six months from now, we're going to be trying to decide how do we cut the budget to make the shortfall we're going to be at. So that's fine. I want to make it very clear though, that's where we stand. So the three of you better put your heads together and come up with what that plan's going to be.
Is there a motion to authorize the superintendent to enter into a letter of intent with Plug Smart for the updates? As presented for Lexington Elementary and Washington Elementary pending the availability of funds?
So moved.
Second.
Um, I just, is there any discussion on this?
That's another $10,000.
22,000.
And I want to point out to Mr. Noel's concerns that this is pending availability of funds. So if the wastewater treatment. Plant fails at Lexington, we would have to pull off. Committing to a piece of one of the projects to allow for that because. If there is not sufficient funds in the capital improvement fund, it's possible we would have to use a portion of that. So this motion is pending. The availability of funds. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
No.
Dr. Mason?
No.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved, 3-2.
Is, on the treasurer's agenda, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the following meeting, special meeting, March 26, 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Um, I think, I was looking over the minutes. At the end of the minutes, it doesn't have the roll call. On the minutes that are in, in the attachment. If you go down to the very bottom for adjournment. And they don't have, have the roll call for adjournment on here. Somebody had just been overlooked. I think it needs to have the roll call on there. Is that correct?
Let me pull them up real quick.
Oh. I see that.
So we, according to the minutes, the meeting never ended.
Oh, no.
I went back, I liked it, I liked the video. We did do roll call to adjourn the meeting, so.
You could approve them pending or approve them with the addition of the roll call added to the end of it.
Okay.
Are we going to amend this? Okay, so is there a motion to amend? Amend motion to approve minutes for March 26, 2020, pending the addition of the roll call on the adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? Please call the roll on the amendment.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries? Dr. Was it a yell?
I'm saying.
Oh, it's all. Uh, Dr. Mason?
Stain.
And Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Uh, motion approved, 3-0-2.
And then restating their original motion, as amended, recommend the motion to approve the minutes of the following meeting, special meeting, March 26, 2020. As amended to add the adjournment, the roll call for the adjournment. Is there any further discussion on that motion? I just wanted to mention again that the minutes we are approving are the ones in the treasurer's folder. That corrected. The motion under VC2. Which should read, recommend the motion to authorize the superintendent to enter into a letter of intent with Plug Smart for upgrades at Marlboro Elementary. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
I'm saying.
Dr. Wilson?
abstain.
And Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved, 3-0-2.
On the personnel cons, agenda, it's a consent agenda. On the administration. This is all together for the whole personnel. Administration resignation. Recommend the motion to accept the resignation of David Rogers, Lexington Elementary Principal, effective August 1, 2020. Is there a motion to recommend the motion to accept the retirement of Christine McLaughlin, High School Language Arts Teacher, effective June 4, 2020. Recommend the motion to hire the following for 2018, 2020 supplemental employment pending verification of satisfactory credentials. BCI and FBI checks as required. Baseball volunteer, Scott McElvein, wrestling assistant, Ken Clark, track volunteer, Jennifer Skolosh, baseball assistant volunteer, Kaden Swisher. Classified substitute list, recommend the motion to hire the following individuals to be added to the classified substitute list for 2019, 20 school year. Pending verification of satisfactory credentials, BCI and FBI checks as required. Krista Edwards, seasonal help, recommend the motion to hire the following individual for seasonal employment, Marcus Lambden.
Second.
Was that Humphries and? Hagan?
Humphries and Mason, I think.
I said. Hagan, I was, yeah.
Thank. Is there any discussion?
Well, we have two significant people we're losing in the district here. One of them being our high school language arts teacher, Miss McLaughlin, and. Also, Mr. Mr. Rogers leaving us from Lexington is a, a big loss to the district as well as both those individuals. But we thank them for the service for the district.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved, 3-0.
Are there any announcements?
I'd kind of touched on everything already, Ms. Gabriel, to be honest with you. We'll just continue our remote learning.
Thank you. Um, the next Board of Education meeting. I'm going to request a special meeting for next week for a district leadership team compact meeting to be held with our attorney, with the board and. Mr. Noel and Mrs. Berger. If everyone could check their schedules and let me know what day and time would work next week.
Mrs. Gabriel, I'd like to invite Mrs. Sutton as well.
Oh, Mrs. Sutton. I'm sorry, thank you.
That's okay. We had chatted about that.
Thank you.
So we're looking at next week?
Yes.
About the public meeting?
We, what's that? I'm sorry.
A public meeting? It would be a public meeting, correct?
Yes.
We thinking the same time, seven o'clock again?
Seven would be great, Joe.
Okay.
I didn't hear what day.
I mean, for me, I'm good any day. Seven o'clock, the work great.
Okay, seven o'clock. I haven't heard the day.
I'm good on any day next week at seven o'clock.
I said the same thing, Carolyn.
Okay. Karen?
Prefer Thursday or Thursday?
Sorry, I couldn't understand what you said.
I would prefer Wednesday or Thursday.
Wednesday or Thursday? Scott?
Yeah, I would think Thursday would be best for me. I could do Wednes, I could do any day, but Thursday would be the best one.
Joe?
Well, we'll make whatever we need to make work.
Okay, Katie?
Um, that's by either, whatever. I'm good with whatever.
And Carol?
I'm I'm good with whatever.
Okay. It sounds like Thursday works for everybody.
Yep.
Thursday at seven o'clock next week. I don't have a calendar in front of me, so I don't know what day that is.
Night.
I've been nine.
Thank you. And that will be, uh, remotely as well. And then, uh, the next regular meeting will be April 16th, 2027 o'clock. Through electronic remote technology meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
There a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Gabriel?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yeah.
Dr. Mason?
Yes.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yes.
Motion approved five, zero.
Thanks, Ben, for making this happen. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Bob, Ben. Good work.
Night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.